Okay. No, you can take that. I've got one now. Yeah. Okay, good morning, everybody. It's nine o'clock. We will call to order the Tuesday meeting of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. For the record, there is a copy of the Open Meetings Act on the north wall of the legislative chambers. There's an automatic defibrillator in the back. With that, I'll ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will call to order the Douglas County Board of Equalization meeting. Mr. Clerk, please roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson.
President, I'm Burke Boyl.
Commissioner Marine Boyle. Commissioner Mike Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Friend? Commissioner Morgan? Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, March 9th, 2021. Item B, call for a meeting that's set Tuesday, March 30th, 2021 as the date for hearing on certified assessment and corrections. What's the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Marine Boyle is their second. Second by Commissioner Friend. Roll call Zoom and please vote internally.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Borgeson voting virtually. All other commissioners present in person.
Okay. Item C is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Equalization items. Board of Equalization items not listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none, we will go to resolutions. We'll take resolutions. D, E, F, G, and H. Is there a motion by someone on the Board? Motion by Commissioner Marine Boyle, seconded by Commissioner PJ Morgan. Seeing or hearing no questions, roll call Zoom. Please vote in the chamber.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Borgeson voting virtually. All other commissioners present in person.
Item I, under protest, Certified Assessment Corrections Addressing the 2020 Real Property Valuation Protest for Melinda, Florida, 2608 Wy Street. No changes are being recommended. Is there a motion by somebody on the Board? Motion by Commissioner Morgan. Just seconded by Commissioner Marine Boyle. Seeing no questions?
If I may, Mr. Chair, I don't believe she was joining us this morning, but I just wanted to check the audience through Zoom if Ms. Florido joined us. She did not indicate she would, but just want to give her an opportunity in case she is on.
Is anyone related to this item on Zoom?
Okay.
Okay.
And I apologize that the motion also included German.
Yes, sorry.
Okay.
Please vote and roll calls them.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Borgeson voting virtually. All other commissioners voting, who are present, voting in person.
Okay, we'll call to order the Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson.
President, virtually.
Commissioner Marine Boyle. Commissioner Mike Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Friend? Commissioner Morgan? Mr. Chair.
Here. Before we go, let me point out a couple of things on the agenda. For items under number three, Item C, the mayor is scheduled to be here at 10 o'clock for that, so we will try to govern the agenda accordingly to set that up in a timely manner. Note that on item A, Finance, letter four, is a repeat, so please know we're removing that from the agenda. Note under item F, it says minutes from the Child New Services Committee. Note as a correction, that should be minutes from the HHS Committee. And also, just note under Consent Agenda, item P. Item one, the correct version is here in front of the Board. I'm assuming the correct version is also outside in the box if anybody wants it, but note that correction was, there was an incorrect version on the website. Those have been remedied. So we'll go to item one, Minutes and Claims. Letter A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, March 9th, 2021. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment and process through Tuesday, March 23rd. Is there a motion? Who was the motion? I missed. Okay, motion Commissioner Marine Boyle. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Mike Friend. Okay. Did I hear something? Okay, roll call Zoom. Please vote in the chamber.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Yes, and then may I have a moment, Mr. Chair, before we move on to the agenda, rest of the agenda?
Sure, go now before he announces the vote.
Well, I just want to have a take a moment of silence for the horrific events that occurred in Boulder, Colorado, where 10 people were gunned down. And please just, in your own words, in your own way, pray for those families, that, their family and friends, and the community, that we provide them strength and love for them to get through this horrific event. So if we could just take a moment of silence, please.
If everyone will vote, and we'll do it right before the next item.
Motion passes. Commissioner Morgan abstaining. Commissioner Borgeson voting yes virtually. All other commissioners present voting yes in person.
I would just like to add, if we could also add, our Asian population, keep them in mind too, especially for the events that occurred in Atlanta.
Thank you. Again, we will take a moment of silence here for the events in Atlanta last week and the events yesterday in Boulder, Colorado. Let's recognize a moment of silence. Thank you all. We'll proceed to item two, which is Consent Agenda. There are 20 items on the Consent Agenda. What's the will of the Board? Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Marine Boyle, there's a second by Commissioner Morgan. Seeing none? Please roll call Zoom. Vote in the chambers.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Yes.
Commissioners in the chamber, we apologize, there's a little lag with the system this morning, so we're trying to get it to you as soon as we can. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Borgeson voting yes virtually. All other commissioners voting in person.
Okay, hold on. Item three is Recognition and Proclamations. We'll take items A and B, and then we'll move on to other business from there. Is there, item A is recognition of the following county employees who are retiring. Vincent Sheridan, who's worked for the Douglas County Department of Corrections for 15 years, and also recognizing Christine McLaughlin, who's worked in the Douglas County Clerk's Office for 21 years. Can I have a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Marine Boyle. Mr. Clerk, do you want to say anything on item B?
That's actually Mr. Friend.
Oh, sorry, sorry. And I don't see him here, so please vote and roll calls them. Yeah, I will.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Borgeson voting virtually. All other commissioners present voting in person.
Okay, we'll go down to Presentations, and we'll go to item A. Dr. Poor, if you're ready.
Yes, good morning, Board members. You are moving through the agenda pretty quickly today, so I need to kind of get organized. But what I want to share with you a little bit first is what are we seeing in regards to infections in Douglas County? And as of today, we have tested 57% of Douglas County residents at least once, and 11.5% of residents have tested positive. That is 65,555 residents. 59,972, however, have recovered fully. That means they have no more symptoms. But 5,583 still have lingering symptoms or have been diagnosed just recently. When we look at the seven-day rolling average, that's a measure that is usually used nationwide, we are at 16.1 new cases per 100,000 individuals. And just to give you a little bit an idea, last week, we had 790 new cases that were identified in Douglas County. And over the last week, we have been hovering around this 839. And last week was the lowest at 790 cases. So that's potentially 49 less cases than the week before, potentially 5.8% decrease. But still, 790 individuals who are positive identified in our community. We also are seeing a slight decrease in testing that is being done in our community. And so last week, we had 13,281 tests that were done in Douglas County, also potentially an 8.5% decrease to the week before. So we really still want to encourage, especially now with some of the new variants that we are recognizing in our community. I think the more testing we can do, the more we know what is in our community and can take appropriate action. Our positivity rate last week, test over test, is 5.9%. That is staying pretty equal over the time. We are reporting 680 total deaths for a case fatality rate of 1.04%. That also has been pretty constant over the last month. What I'm pleased to report is that we are reporting 10 deaths as of the beginning of this month. And pleased to report is probably not the right term I want to use, because this is tragic for every family. But if you think back, there were a month when we had more than 100 deaths in our community. And so I'm saying we are seeing a decrease in that measure in our community. However, still, 75% of our deaths are in whites, 10.6% in African Americans, 11.5% in our Hispanic community, and 1.5% in our Asians. Our hospital data looks pretty good at this time. As of last night, we had 80 COVID patients in our Omaha-area hospitals. That has been now for more than a month that we have been under 100 patients. And that is really good news if you think at one time we were at 445 patients. We have, of those 80, 31 of them are in our ICUs. Five are persons under investigation, meaning they are still waiting tests. And 18 of our individuals hospitalized are on ventilators. So overall, our cases, our hospitalization, they are all going in the right direction. So let's move over now a little bit to vaccination, this phase that we are in now. And as of today, we have 19.3% of our Douglas County residents who have been fully vaccinated. And this is from those individuals who are eligible to be vaccinated, 19.3%, one in five. So I'm really very anxious of that number every day to try to see. Also, when we look at it, 131,946 Douglas County residents have at least received one dose. And that is 31% of those that are eligible. But I also want to say, you know, there is a workload that goes along with that. And I think we have passed a milestone in our community again. As of yesterday, we have administered more than a quarter million doses of vaccine in Douglas County, mainly 255,414 doses. And, you know, kudos to everybody who works so hard in all of these different vaccination clinics to get us vaccinated as quickly as possible. So you have heard me say, over the last two to three weeks, we have been pretty stagnant in regards to the number of vaccines that were allotted to Douglas County. We started out around 12,200 doses, and last week, we got 12,830 doses. And this week, we got 12,870 doses. What we have seen is, however, we have seen a real collaboration between the local health departments across the state of Nebraska. So both weeks, last week and this week, we have received 500 doses each from Northeast Health Department up in Dakota. Next week, we are hoping, we are hoping that we are going to be able to put some orders and get some allocation of Johnson &amp; Johnson. We haven't received Johnson &amp; Johnson for the last three weeks, so to say. But according to the governor, we should get potentially into Nebraska close to 22,000 doses of Johnson &amp; Johnson. I always look at us for receiving a third of that, so that may be around 7,000. So we are ready to get more doses into Douglas County. We have also decreased the eligibility, the age eligibility, and you may have seen that in the news. As of Monday, yesterday, we lowered it to those individuals 60 and above. And within the last two hours, we got 6,500 schedules that were made. And so it seems to be going pretty well, that age group seems to be eager to get vaccinated. However, I have to tell you, I would not be surprised. We are waiting till Wednesday. But if we see openings next week, we'll lower it even further, and we'll lower it for the next, for another five years. We just want to go forward in a kind of measured way. Also today, all those with comorbidities that have been identified by health system, with several comorbidities, and also taking into consideration the Social Vulnerability Index, those individuals that are at a high priority, they will be informed by the healthcare systems. They will get a very special link that they can make appointments for. So I just want to make clear, I get some notices from individuals who say we don't want the Douglas County Health Department to have health information. This has nothing to do with us. This is all determined through the electronic medical record that the hospitals have. And we are telling the hospitals, like this week, all the hospital systems together received 10% of our allotment. And that is how the governor wants to move forward. 90% still for those that are at higher ages, and 10% those that are with comorbidities. So if you count for us, that is close to 1,300 doses are going to go to hospital systems to identify those with the highest risk for comorbidities and a bad health outcome if they will be infected with COVID patients. So I'm proud of our hospital systems, who all of them have worked together. We have been on constant calls with them and the local health department, not only Douglas County, but also South Bay County and Three Rivers up in Washington County. So those patients who are in these systems and are high vulnerability, they are going to be vaccinated in the neighboring counties where they live. So I think this is a good process, how we are making sure that those with underlying illnesses and comorbidities are being vaccinated. The other thing, I just may want to share with you a little bit about the different vaccination clinics that we have. And I think they are just, every day, there are at least three or four options in Douglas County. Like today, individuals, we are going to have Methodist Hospital going to the OHA towers today and tomorrow, because they have to provide a second doses. Today, you may have heard on the media, NOAA, the North Omaha Alliance, is going to have a vaccination event together with the College of Nursing. They are going to help them out. Nebraska Medicine has clinics three times, four times actually this week. CHI Emanuel is going to have a clinic on Wednesday. Methodist is having clinic on Wednesday and on Saturday. Quark Center is again, was on yesterday, is going to be again a clinic there on Thursday. So I think why I'm sharing this is to really show this community how many options there are for individuals to get vaccinated. We really want to. And Creighton, of course, has their big Saturday mass vaccination clinics. That is always a success. We are also introducing this week, because we are really focusing on our North Omaha friends, potentially a Girls Inc. vaccination clinic, mainly for those neighborhoods, so individuals do not have to travel a long distance. Also this week, in a partnership with One World and also Total Wellness, as well as Matrix, which is a company that provides flu vaccine to businesses, those three businesses, those three flu clinic vaccination providers, they'll go out to meatpacking and foodpacking, so that we are able to get those individuals vaccinated as quickly as possible. All of that is going to occur this week, too. In addition to our pharmacies, through the federal pharmacy programs, are receiving vaccines directly from the federal government, you hear and see advertised Hy-Vee pharmacies, one of the larger ones, they potentially receive 10,000 doses this week. Half of them first doses, half of them are going to be second doses. They are also following our eligibility requirement. So lots of efforts, lots of community events going forward, and I hope people are eager and are able to find an opportunity to get vaccinated. So we are moving forward pretty quickly, and I'm looking forward to being in May, as the president has announced, potentially even before that, when we can open it up to everyone who is eligible. Any questions from me?
Commissioner Marine Boyle.
Thank you so much. Dr. Poor, these are always very informative. And just as a statement in general, is that, from what I understand, the healthcare facilities, there's a CDC protocol, so don't call your doctor's office necessarily to get your appointment, because I work, well, I am a doctor. But the, don't call, because there's a CDC algorithm that is used to determine who the most risky folks are out there who would benefit from the vaccine. So basically, doctors' offices are using that algorithm to choose patients in order to get those shots. So if you call your doctor, they're going to go through the algorithm. But the bottom line is, these computer systems are kind of producing those names for us, on those folks that we need to call for that. So just a little point, a little point to make there. But, so Dr. Poor, a few months ago, you talked about how some facilities are receiving vaccinations that don't necessarily pass through the state or the county, they're coming from the federal government. Are we including those in these vaccination numbers? And is there a way to, say, get increased numbers of vaccines from those types of institutions?
So a few comments I want to make, and I think, Dr. Boyle, you are absolutely right in regards to don't call your physicians. We actually did send out a health alert yesterday to all the physicians in Douglas County. And we have done this, this is number five now, since we started the pandemic, to keep physicians informed what is going on in our community. And also, we described very clearly how this algorithm was developed, so that physicians who have questions from their patients also do have some answers to that. And in regards to your second question, so the federal government has provided direct vaccines to the pharmacy program, as well as to the federally qualified health centers. So we have two health centers, One World from the beginning, they were one of the first health centers who received direct shipment. And Kenny McMorris just told me yesterday, he's going to be able to order next week. They get that shipment directly, and that is not included in my 12,870 doses that I shared with you this morning. We have a little bit insight into what that number is, but every week, we need to ask, and it's usually a little bit delayed. So we don't have, we don't have good sight. And also, I tell you, they have very specific restrictions, and they cannot share their vaccine, for example, with one of our community clinics. Because whatever they have, they need to be accountable for that vaccine, so that sharing is a little bit difficult at this time. We do want to make sure that they also have the reporting that goes into the Nebraska Immunization Registry, so we know how many people have been vaccinated in our community, and that is hopefully working at this time.
Good. And then I know that there's still some frustration with the vaccine rollout, because there's inconsistencies between different counties, you know, so you can be 50 to 64 in other counties, and here we're at 60. And so is there a way, say, for example, to go to the state and see if the allotment can change to us, for us?
So a little bit, changes have been made, from what we have heard from some of the rural areas. But, you know, it is what it is. There is really quite a difference of hesitancy in some of the rural areas versus more the urban areas. And I think the worlds are doing as good as they can. But so you have seen, we have seen a little bit a shift of that, and what we are getting from the other local health departments also is explaining some of that. So I'm really thankful to the local health departments, who have given some vaccine to Lincoln and some of the larger areas and to us at this time.
And then one last question is just that, these other, the hospital systems that are providing vaccination sites, are those folks that still sign up just going through the Douglas County website? Is that how they sign up for those vaccines, to go then to the Methodist or the Creighton site?
So at this time, yes, we are using the scheduling system, and when people go on our website and want to schedule those sites, because they are all community sites, so they are all on there. Now, however, the pharmacy sites like Hy-Vee and actually also One World, they are not on those, on our site. So on our side is really only the community vaccination sites.
Very good, and thank you again for everything you do for us.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Thanks for this report, Doctor. Just to clarify a couple of things. The Douglas County population, per the last census, is in the range of 520,000. And I'm trying to rectify that with the numbers that we're getting here today. So the total number of Douglas County residents who have been vaccinated, do you have that number?
Did, so I just can make your math a little bit easier. We are only calculating from those who are eligible. And when you look on our website, those who are eligible are 427,000 some individuals. 571,000 is the total of our population. But those below 16 years of age cannot be vaccinated yet. So that's why I always say, of the individuals... So that's why I always say of the individuals that are eligible to be vaccinated. Is that helpful?
Yes, it is. And I guess it might be helpful for people to know who is not eligible to be vaccinated.
Okay, so who is not eligible is those 16 years and below because the vaccines are not tested in that, in those individuals. And if you go on our website, we try to be as clear, you will actually see some wording underneath our numbers that says 427,000 or so on, so that people do not, are not confused about that.
Okay. So when we're talking about these numbers on a weekly basis, and I'm glad to see that they're, they're up. So this week's available vaccines are 12,870. Is that correct? I heard you say that, yes?
That's, that's correct, yes.
And then you indicated that we would be receiving an additional 500 doses from two other health departments, is that correct?
From one health department, but over the last two weeks, we already received last week 400 doses, and we are receiving this week 500 doses. So that's in addition to it.
So that would be in addition to the 12,870, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And I've been getting a lot of inquiries, I'm sure you have too, from people regarding their pre-existing conditions or comorbidity. And I hear you saying that they are going to be eligible. And do we have a date for that, when that is going to happen?
So this morning, actually, early morning, the hospital systems informed their patients who are fitting into that highest risk group and are giving them the link. Like I said, that's 1,300 vaccines that we have available for Douglas County. So that starts today.
Okay. So people will be hearing from their treating physician or their, or their healthcare provider today if they fall into that 1,300 category with pre-existing conditions?
That's correct. And remember, that needs to be shared with four health systems in Douglas County. Nebraska Medicine, CHI, Methodist, and Children's.
And you indicated that we are not currently dispensing Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccines, is that right?
Correct. We have not received Johnson &amp; Johnson for the last two weeks.
So the last shipment of Johnson &amp; Johnson, I believe we used a portion of that anyhow with our educators, is that right?
Very good memory. We received 5,000 doses and we used all of it for educators, yes.
So do you know in advance for, you know, a week or two or a month out, what you're going to receive and what type of vaccine you're going to receive? Do you, do you get that advance notice?
I would love to have that advance notice, but I don't. And I'm, I'm just giving you an example. Actually, today's Tuesday, potentially by the, the end of the day, we may know what we may get next week or what we can order. You know, if we have a, like, if we say, for example, if we would say we have enough doses, we don't need any in Douglas County. Believe me, that's never the case. I want actually all the doses, I always say, you know, if you don't use them in your community, we'll take them, we'll take every single dose. But so I do not know then what we are getting next, next week. And so I'm, I'm sharing with you some of the difficulties and the challenges are that suddenly last week, we got 4,000 doses of our allotment of the 12,000 that were Moderna. We hadn't received Moderna in two weeks. Now this week, we didn't receive any Moderna, and we say, we went back to the state and we said, you know, we need, so this consistency is really, really lacking. The only consistency that have, that we have had is for the last three weeks, we had around 12,200 doses. We could always count that that is the minimum we had, and then we, we had a little bit above it. But this is, this is the difficulty for planning. This is absolutely a challenge, so to say.
That's time.
Thank you, Doctor.
Any more questions? If not, if not, Commissioner Kavanaugh, if you got a second time, if you've got something to continue.
I just wanted to do a quick recap to make sure that we have these numbers correctly. I think at the top of your presentation, you, you indicated that 19.3% of Douglas County had been fully vaccinated. Did I get that right?
Yes, you got that right. 77,488 Douglas County residents on 19.3% have been fully vaccinated.
And I'm just looking at the national average, which is about 14%. So we're doing better than, than average?
We are doing very well.
Okay. Then I believe the other two numbers that caught my attention was 131,946 have had at least one dose, is that correct?
That's correct, 31%.
And the, I'm sorry, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions? Okay, looking up, Mr. Clerk.
Hey, Dr. Poor, Dan Ash, thank you for letting me ask you a question. So the places around the county that are administering vaccinations, you know, they have to be used within a certain time. So let's just, I'll just use Hy-Vee, Hy-Vee is an example. Say one day they have 200 appointments scheduled and 16 people don't show up. Are these places having like a waitlist that people can get on? So like, they just call 16 people that, hey, if you can get here today, we can give you a vaccine because they have to be used, you know, by tomorrow, and 16 of our appointments didn't show up. Am I making sense?
Yeah, you know, again, I can't answer that because I really do not know what the Hy-Vee processes are to do this. I would hope so. I would hope that, that they are very careful of what doses they are, what vials they are defrosting and are using, and are using those, because by manufacturers, they have to use those within so many hours. But, but I don't know what process they are using.
That's okay. It's basically just, it wouldn't hurt for people to maybe contact some of these places that are administering the doses to see if they're doing things like that.
You know, I never say no. I think I would, yeah, I, I, I don't know. I wouldn't want to comment on them because of their workload that they have.
I understand, sorry, I didn't mean to put you in a tough spot. I was just curious if there was any, if you knew anything like that, so, okay, thank you.
Okay. Dr. Poor, I see no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to go now back to citizens' comments, and Donna, you need to be on deck. If we can do this quick enough, I'm gonna have you come up for the last 15 before the mayor. Item four, we'll go back to citizens' comments. Are there any citizens that wants to comment on board of commissioner-related items not listed on the agenda? Are there any citizens' comments at this time?
Good morning. I almost missed you. Lurg Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'm going to take liberty this morning with the rules. Citizens' comments imply I can talk about anything not on the agenda. I do want to compliment this board because they have changed some of the rules to the betterment. But I'd also like to say that in view of elections coming up, we need to think about what we pledged to the republic. Remembering that in our history, the original founding fathers, long before they did a Declaration of Independence, had the local assemblies, which were their legislative bodies. They were largely Americans, a lot of them mostly loyalists at that time. And occasionally the king would suspend that body because he didn't like what the unruly colonists were doing. But those legislative assemblies, they called them then, largely listened to the citizens. They didn't have funny rules like associations of, National Association of Counties, Legislative Exchange Councils that they go to and follow their rules and regulations for what is referred to as parliamentary rules. We're not a parliament, we're a republic, and you're supposed to be listening to and doing the will of the people, not of other bodies from outside of this one and outside of this county. So maybe you should consider, reconsider some of those guidelines that you follow from the people on high. I recently asked the Attorney General of the State of Nebraska, a personal question face-to-face during a meeting that he was speaking at, as to who the Open Meetings Act is for. And oh, my guy, surprise, surprise, he said it's intended for the citizen, not for the legislature or not for this body. You guys make your own rules, so why would that be rules against the citizen? Because you can already do your own rules, and you do. But that, that is for us, and I'm glad to see that, oh, I thought you said you put it on the back wall. Because citizens like me don't want to go over there in front of the camera and look up the Open Meetings Act while we're talking, or while you're talking. Some refinements to the citizen comment rule here on the handout that the Open Meetings Act should give reasonable notice of the matters to be considered by the board so that the public will know which matters are under consideration. Need to add something there that says, and therefore not to comment on. Because if it's under consideration, we may or may not be asked to comment it on during that particular item. So you may clear that up for citizens that don't get down here very often, because when they come in here and sit down and take a quick read, citizens' comments might be passed over before they even get to that point on reading the agenda. And they don't understand that they can't comment on anything that's on the agenda during that time. We do have a First Amendment that applies to petition to your governor, but the Declaration of Independence also did. And that's what these bodies are for, for us to petition our government. So why therefore would we shut a citizen up? Because he's slightly off the topic and appoint a sheriff's deputy to escort them out of the room if they're slightly out of order according to your rule. Those are rather unparliamentary. And speaking of parliamentary, the rules, nationwide organizations that follow parliamentary rules, we're not a parliament. Ratch's rules of order are most recognized, more so in most bodies than our parliamentary rules. A citizen might be called out of order, but a commissioner seldom, if ever, I don't remember hats. And my point on that is, in this paragraph, it says that we're not to have any back and forth with you people unless we do so privately on our own time. However, some of you people feel it's okay for a citizen such as I
Thank you, Larry.
who says something you don't like, you might comment to me as I'm walking back to my chair.
Thank you.
That's
Anyone else? Citizens' comments? Again, anyone else?
Louise Hematness, 3306 Burke Street. Morning Commissioners. I want to comment on the juvenile justice system. I've, I went to a committee meeting last week, and I got some information. What I'm interested in, when I go to this meeting, is, is to avoid the, the experience where I'm getting esoteric information, which means that it's hard to understand even for somebody who wants to participate. And I think the new, the new commissioners can understand that it's very frustrating when you experience an information dump and you're trying to figure out like what, what's relevant, what's actionable, what, what is going to be considered in the short term. So in that in mind, I want to share information from the committee, which is Douglas County Path to Success for Juminals. So this is nice where you've simplified the, the process where the troubled youth enters the, the system. There's early intervention, there's formal intervention, and there's intensive intervention. I've seen another flow chart, and that was very confusing. This, and I, I think it was a flow chart for the juvenile justice process, but this one's, this one's nice. You're probably wanting to show this to the community to get them involved, to get as much help as you can to juvenile who are in trouble. Maybe interve, early intervention. Now, the services that juveniles get, they're varied. I know that there is a new service for ankle bracelets, and that's a particular service. So not everybody in the communities could be interested in providing that service or, you know, they're, they're not going to even look at that. They might want to look at job training, skill building for maybe at early intervention. So I was thinking, how is, how can this information be consumable? And I looked at another complicated system, which is the the employer identification number. When you go to the IRS, you get something like this, or you can get something like this. If you're a sole proprietor or corporation, S. corporation, a state, nonprofit organization, they're basic, this basically becomes buttons. And so, you know, you're a church organization, you know, you're going to want to go here. You click on that, and it, it brings you to the next step. So I was thinking that before you show this roadmap, you might want to show something like this. So you start with, like, here are the services for early, early intervention programs, formal intervention, you have some court orders, injunctions, intensive intervention, you got placements. And so when you're explaining the services, you start with this, you kind of get a, a focus, and then you can go to your roadmap. I don't know if, if that would help it be more consumable with your, with your var, various services. You start there, maybe you click on an order. Okay, well, that was formal intervention, and hopefully they, the exit when probation intake chooses not to, chooses no detention, as an example. But anyway, that's, that's what I am thinking about for engaging the community. I know that you guys are going to have some Zoom meetings, and, you know, if you're there in the Zoom meeting and they just cover everything, that, that might not be something that everybody wants to participate in. They might want more of a, like, a focused session on early intervention or another session on formal intervention and so on. Thank you.
Anyone else want to make citizen's comment? Again, anyone?
What did you say?
Anyone else want to make citizens' comments?
Oh. Oh, I heard something, sorry.
Again, anyone else? Thank you. Donna, is ten minutes going to give you justice? Okay, then we'll go on to, we'll go back down to item five C. Update from the Omaha Community Foundation on the stimulus program of the two million dollars it's administering.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers, and thank you all, all of you commissioners. Donna Kush, Omaha Community Foundation, I'm the president and CEO. And I am here today to give you a quick update on the stimulus program that we launched for you earlier this, just a few weeks ago. So this was a natural extension of the work that we did for you with nonprofit grant making last year and utilizing our portal that we have to make grant applications and make grant submissions. We were able to use that expertise and grant making along with partnering with Nebraska Enterprise Fund, another nonprofit who specializes in helping small businesses. And so we leveraged their expertise in that area specifically to help with the technical, technical advice on the grant applications. So just a reminder, this was two million dollars in partnership again with Douglas County and Nebraska Enterprise Fund to support small locally owned and operated businesses in the food and beverage industry. Just a, just the requirements that we had set up for this, knowing that, you know, ideally we would be able to help a large group, but we knew we had to draw the line somewhere, and we really were focusing here on the small mom and pop type of organizations, small businesses, providing the much needed assistance that they needed. Even even with some of the other assistance that was available last year, that assistance had run out and it was, it was time to renew. So first and foremost, it had to be a locally owned business in the food and beverage industry. The NICS codes that we used for that, NICS is the North American Industry Classification System and Understood Business Category System. And there were those three codes that we used. Basically, it was restaurants, it was bars, and it was also some catering organizations as well as food trucks. And then they had to be registered, be active through the Nebraska Secretary of State, specifically, you know, collecting and remitting sales tax. They had to have been in operation in Douglas County since January of two thousand nineteen. And we looked at, we had to kind of draw the line again somewhere, as I said, so we were looking for assistance to those with one point two five million or less in in their financial statements for two thousand nineteen. And they had to have lost at least thirty percent of their revenue. And we measured that by their reduction in the sales tax. So the overall response that we had, we received one hundred and eleven applications out of those. We had sixty-two as of yesterday when I turned in this this presentation. But it looks like one is going to be declining the assistance. They feel that they probably have actually taken a turn for the better and don't feel they need the assistance. So it looks as though that's probably going to be sixty-one total businesses that would be receiving the stimulus support. And the grants range anywhere from three thousand to sixty-three thousand five hundred. Notifications for those grants went out last week. There's a whole process there of them signing a grant agreement and getting that back to us. And we expect that as soon as that gets back to us, then we can get those, the grants, the funds out actually, hopefully by the end of the, by the end of the month here, if if the grant agreements are turned around back to us in a very timely manner. So some of our lessons learned that we had from this, the the range of losses was really just wide and far. Some were minimal, some were a hundred percent losses. Another learning that we had is that there's kind of a gap here in support that for businesses who perhaps started sometime in two thousand nineteen, but not in January, so maybe they'd only been open six to nine months. So there's a little bit of a gap there, we see. And then also larger establishments and those in adjacent industries, you know, of course, are still experiencing need as well, which is no surprise, I know, to anyone that there's much wider need out there. And by adjacent industries, we mean those who perhaps didn't follow under those specific NICS codes. And with that, I'll take any questions?
Any questions? Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Donna, thanks for the, thanks for the feedback, or the report and the information. Did you get, did you receive any feedback generally from, from small business owners that said, look, I don't, I don't want to take the tax hit here. I mean, this is a, you know, this is a five thousand dollar grant, it's a ten thousand dollar grant, it's going to push me into a different area. Did you, did you hear any of those implications at all? I mean, was that the only one that you had turned one down?
That was, that was the the only one thus far, and the notifications went out, started going out last week. So I would expect if we'd have heard from any others, we probably would have by now.
Yeah.
Regarding, answering your question on the taxes, no, because most of them had such significant losses.
Right.
That I think they're looking at this assistance as really just helping them keep their doors open and the lights on.
Okay, good, thank you, Donna.
Anyone else? Commissioner Kavanaugh, any Commissioner Boyle?
Thank you for this great report. The two million dollars that we designated for this program went exclusively to tax paying small businesses in our community. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So this was directed at food services, which would also include food trucks, catering services, and some bars. But they were of a certain scale, small.
Very small, yes.
So if I read this correctly and I hear your comments, larger establishments and those in adjacent and other industries are still experiencing heavy need. So it would make sense that this tax paying community, the larger establishments and those in adjacent and other industries, receive a similar consideration that we are going to get additional assistance money from the federal government going forward. Would you be in a position then to help us with that program if we if we went that direction?
Yes, and you know, we'd look at our other workflow that we have currently and other grant making processes we have. But we are very open to continuing discussions on on further grant making and partnerships.
So the sixty-two that that were eligible for grants is a subset of the hundred and eleven who actually made applications. But many of those hundred and eleven would fall into the categories that we're talking about. They need the help. For some reason, they didn't meet one of the criteria, one or more of the criteria. But they, they came forward because they needed the assistance and they are tax paying entities in our community.
The majority of those who, out of the one hundred, the fifty or so who who applied but did not meet the criteria, the the main criteria piece that they, most of those did not fit, was meeting that thirty percent threshold. Some were just right under the thirty percent.
Well, I think this argues for us giving the tax paying businesses in our community the help they need to get through the pandemic. I want to say thanks to the Omaha Community Foundation and Nebraska Energy Fund for helping us get this money to people as quickly as possible. And I think I heard from you that they should be receiving grant checks from us in the next week or so.
That's correct.
That's great. Thanks again.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Maureen Boyle? I'm just saying, start saying Dr. Boyle, because there's a clear distinction there between the Dr. Boyle.
This has nothing to do with my medical background now. So I'm just wondering if you'll be able to determine if these businesses that are getting the funds will will be able to stay open solely because of the grant they're receiving? Are you able to determine that, or will you be following up on that?
We did ask them a question on the application about, you know, what this potentially does for them. And the responses are that, you know, yes, this is helping them to be able to survive. We, we received, I I know at least one email that was forwarded to me that that they were ecstatic. This was a huge shot in the arm for them. They'd had a tremendous impact, and this was really going to be extremely helpful for them in being able to maintain their operations.
Very good, good, thank you.
Very much for what you and your staff have done in so many ways for us. As far as the small businesses, I think under this new stimulus, they will be able to talk with their bankers and so on and get some of those forgivable loans. The restaurant industry, cleaners, and other small businesses. I think that's out there. Am I correct on that, that's going to be available now?
You know, I have not been following, I have not heard anything about a PPP type of forgivable.
Right.
So, but if there, if there was still a need or assistance out there, we'd be happy to do some kind of assessment for profits and nonprofits to help figure that out.
All right, well, thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, Donna, we're good. Ten o'clock on the air?
Great.
All right.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You talking related to this, Sean? Come on, please, real quick, because.
Sean Malats, one oh four oh four, North one hundred and thirty-second Street. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I had no intention to talk on this, but I'm a practicing CPA and helped many, many businesses through the PPP program. We did over two hundred and fifty applications a year ago. We've done over a hundred and eighty so far this year on the second round. So I do want to thank you for helping these businesses. It's been a shot in the arm and most of them probably would have closed. But with that in mind, what I've seen in the restaurant industry is when you're basing your program on the nineteen year, most businesses had an awesome year in nineteen, and that thirty percent drop forced them or made them go under the one point two million dollar threshold. So I don't know if there's any adjustments that you could do to the program to perhaps look at the twenty twenty gross revenues. And this is especially on the high end type restaurants. Our fast foods did great because there were lines and everybody saw that. But it's the more leisure, family style restaurants that really were hurt by the pandemic. So I don't know if there's any tweaking to the programs. I'd love to provide some input, maybe some resources if you need it. But again, thank you for the program, and if there's other ways that we can give these restaurants a shot in the arm, I just really love it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Excuse me, that's a very good point, and we will be looking at this going forward to make those kinds of adjustments. Could you make sure that we have your contact information to follow up with you?
Yeah, I'd love to help you. I can tell you the programs we've used, how many restaurants we've helped. And most businesses, I would say at least fifty percent of the businesses we have would be very much struggling or out of business at this point if it wasn't for the PP programs. I can tell you as a firm, the programs we've helped clients receive over forty-five million dollars worth of funding since April a year ago. So it's been awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
You bet.
The clerk.
I'll grab my business card.
I appreciate that.
You bet.
And it has been a real lifeline to businesses. It's been make or break for businesses, and we're happy to be able to do this. We want to do more. So thanks for coming forward.
And as a, you know, the PPP program a year ago, CPAs weren't allowed to charge for their services based on the first program. But as a firm, we made a decision, we shut down our office for ten days the first week of April. As you can imagine, that's not the week you want to shut down your office, but we did it. We felt it's important to keep our clients on long term. So again, I appreciate all you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. With that, I see, you ready? She's not, okay. Then let's go. I'm going to skip item B because that's going to take a little bit of time. Let's go then to finance, and we'll go to the committees. Item one, the budget report, I'm assuming, is that submitted?
It's submitted, and Mike and I met with Joe Lorenz, our finance director, this morning. And we'll be having some future meetings, I think, hopefully on April second, a little meeting. So we're continuing to work with Joe, who's has an excellent expertise his past ten years. So we're on it.
Okay. Let's go to, Mr. Clerk, item three is just for reporting purposes. My understanding, we don't have to approve this, is that it?
Correct, just as presented.
Note that item three is as presented. Commissioner Borgson, if you want to try to do this, we'll go to item two, discussion regarding the idea of conducting listening sessions with the public and providers and stakeholders in the mental health community on how to spend the six million dollars allocated to the general fund by the board. It's on you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And again, as discussed yesterday in our pre-board meeting, this is just a way for us to get input from distinct groups, the general public, organizations, and agencies that provide mental health services, and organizations and agencies that have some touch to the mental health system and to those affected actually by mental health or who have a loved one. So what I've envisioned was having three listening sessions where we do these on Zoom and maybe like one week after another. And we ask whichever group we're speaking of just to give us in, you know, a two minute timeframe, what their priorities are, what they see as the priorities should be that we're, we should be looking at. And then take that information after we're done with these listening sessions and see if we can draft our strategic plan for how to spend these dollars. Again, this is, I think, a good way for us to, again, get input from those very important contingencies. And if everybody is in agreement with that, I would move forward with getting those lined up.
And I see no, nothing hanging. We got one, Commissioner Maureen Boyle?
I just think we, we have to, I love the idea. I think we really have to be careful to identify the stakeholders very carefully and just make sure that we really, including a wide variety of folks that would would have great input into something like this.
Well, there would be, if I could, Commissioner Boyle, there would be stakeholders that we would identify, like, or could identify through Region Six as network providers. We could then put out a call for those that aren't in the network but still provide mental health services. And then, as far as the general public, we just open it up. Because I can tell you, there is a lot of folks out there that would like to provide their input on things that we should look at or services that we may need to build capacity to or that are missing completely. So that one would definitely just be open to to anybody and everybody to give us their, you know, kind of two minutes spiel on what they think we should be paying attention to.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Louise?
Yes, I have a suggestion. Louise Hematness, thirty-three oh six Burt Street. With the Zoom meeting, I think that there needs to be another component where it's accessible, similar to what we're doing right now, where there's discussion on Zoom, but there's a place here where you can sit down and listen. I think a physical space and with the Zoom would be good for these discussions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing nothing else, let me, real quick note to the public. Item C, which is Child New Services Committee, that is for submission and reporting purposes only. Item F, the Minister of the Health and Human Service Committee for submission and reporting purposes. Item D, I forgot to mention at the beginning, item D is being laid over. So if anybody's here for item D, that's going to be laid over. So with that, we're going to go back around to presentations and proclamations, and item C, it's a resolution honoring honoring the life of Dr. Joseph Stotter. Again, we all have known about this, and again, I'm glad to have the mayor and her family here to express our regards to her again on this tragic loss. And just reiterate that, you know, the community, as you stated, is very gracious and we're glad for their sympathies. And just hope your family knows that there's people around you for access in this period of time. I can tell you from my, not from my husband, losing my husband, but from both my parents, that it's something that never goes away. And hearing my father's comments after my mother passed, it's, it's really hard after you spent more life with one person than you have with your parents to some degree. So. So with that, I want to read this and then I know some members of the board have some sentiments they want to share with you. Whereas Dr. Joseph Stotter was recruited to Omaha in 1993 to develop a hospital trauma system, the first of his kind. His expertise in trauma care built an enhanced model for the emergency medical response system in place today. And whereas over the last 20 years, he served as a medical director for the Omaha Fire Department, Douglas County 911, the Metro Community College and Epley Airfield. He has also served as the Director of Trauma for the State of Nebraska. And whereas Dr. Stotter attended McMurray College in Jacksonville, Illinois, where he received a Bachelor of Science in Chemistry. He earned a medical degree at St. Louis University and a Doctorate of Pulmonary Psychognosychoology and Biophysics at the University of Washington in Seattle. And whereas Dr. Stotter practiced at St. Louis University Hospital, UTMB, in Galveston, Texas, Creighton University and the University of Nebraska Medical Center. He specialized in trauma surgery and critical care. And whereas Dr. Stotter passed away on March 5th, 2021, Dr. Stotter is survived by his wife, Omaha Mayor Jean Stotter children, Dr. Andrew Stotter, his wife Alana, Aunt Elizabeth Letty and her husband Tom and four grandchildren. And whereas Dr. Stotter will be remembered as compassionate and committed to his family, excellent patient care, medical training and education and service to the city of Omaha and Douglas County. Now therefore be resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby honors the life of Dr. Joseph Stotter and recognizes his outstanding contribution to Douglas County and the medical community for more than 25 years. And with that, I'd ask for a motion for approval. Motion by Commissioner Kavanaugh, second by Commissioner Morgan. Mayor, if you'd like to, if you want any words, and then we'll go around to the board. If you have anything or your family wants to say.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you and thank everyone in the city that there's been definitely an outpouring of support. I've literally received thousands of cards and letters and emails and texts because I know, I have known for many, many years, what an impact my husband Joe had on this community. He took care of other people and he saved lives. And he didn't, he didn't want anybody to take care of him or to save his life. And our heart breaks for the loss of him. I hope he's at peace and at a better place. But I want to ask you all to continue to make it a priority to care for people's mental health. Some of the people that you just wouldn't imagine are going through depression, which Joe was. We recognized a change in him over the last year or so. We encouraged him to get help and he did not want to. And we had no idea it would end the way it did. And so he will be remembered as someone, like I said, who had great bedside manner, great compassion for people, worked very, very hard. And I know he impacted many, many, many lives. The one thing I found so touching is we received so many letters from people that have had suicide in their family and more people than I ever knew before. And wrote me and the kids here to give us hope. One of the most touching letters was from a former Omaha police officer who lost his wife by suicide after a 32-year addiction to pain meds. And he, it touched me because he said, "I am writing this letter to give you hope and to let you know that life will go on and you can smile again and you can be happy again." And so again, I really want to thank everybody for their support. My daughter would like to say a few things too.
I just want to say thank you so much for you guys recognizing my dad to the board today. I think that above, I mean, aside from his love for my mom and our family, community service and the community in Omaha is what meant most to him. Public health, public service, his job were everything to him. And he dedicated his life to helping others. Again, to kind of reflect off what my mom had just said, I just ask you that if anybody here, anybody listening today is feeling any hopelessness, to ask for help. I think if we want to learn from anything from this, it's that if you're starting to feel sad, feeling down, feeling depressed, feeling suicidal, to ask for help. We've set up a couple memorial funds on my dad's behalf that I think is important. The Omaha Police Foundation and First Responders. And I just think that if we can focus on the good that he's done, hopefully with his death, it can bring a positive reflection on the mental health crisis that our country and community are facing. Again, thank you so much for your guys' support and your guys' recognition. And my father, it meant the world to him.
Commissioner Morgan.
I want to thank the mayor and her family very, very much. And it was 30 years ago as I was in the mayor's office and on almost the exact day in March, lost my 26-year-old son to suicide. And I know when you talk about the cards and letters coming to you, how helpful that is and the support of this community. And it's just something that, as you said, Commissioner Rogers, it doesn't go away. But we're here to support you. And I will say one thing, being in the mayor's office was very helpful to me at that period of time and all the support.
Commissioner Maureen Boyle.
It's very obvious that Dr. Stotter had a huge impact on this community. He started practicing there when I was just starting medical school there. I don't believe our paths had crossed and regardless, I would just be a little med student. I wouldn't know what I was looking at anyway, to be honest. Something just, I was just looking over things a little bit and there's a lot of work right now in physicians' mental health. And what it boils right down to is that there is a physician that dies from suicide every day in this country. So suicide, the suicide rate is twice as that of the general population. So physicians will attempt suicide as often as the general population, but we succeed at twice the rate. So there is a crisis in the medical community about physicians and we're trying to figure out what is it about it? It's not just burnout, it's depression. It's feeling like we hold ourselves at the top of our profession. We want to do right by our patients. But sometimes things don't quite go our way and we take it completely and personally and just down to our core. And I know several of my partner, I mean, we go home, we feel it. We take it home with us. Sometimes we cry about it. We don't, we feel the stigma of trying, of going to seek help because we see it as a sign of weakness. It's very hard to overcome that. But to experience that type of tragedy, it's absolutely gut-wrenching. And on, just, and aside from that, I know what it's like to lose a parent, a spouse in a very public way. So my mom passed away two years ago and she was a huge political figure in town. And to see how my dad maneuvered that, he still has issues dealing with that and we do too. So the one thing I feel like my family has in common with your family is as a child of the person who died in a very public way, it takes, it's a lot different. So more than anything, I really hope that you all just come to peaceful terms with this. So I really wish peace upon you and your family.
Anyone else? Commissioner Fran, then Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mayor, I'm, you've known me for quite a while. I'm a man of many words, but I don't have words for this. And I'm glad I knew Joe and I'm glad I know you and your family. Thanks.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I want the Stotter family to know that it's our privilege to honor the memory of Joe. You kids should be very proud of the contribution that your father made to our community. And I particularly want to note the grace and poise and courage that the mayor has displayed during this tough time. The Omaha community family, I think, stands united in sending our hearts and prayers out to you. And we appreciate the contribution that Joe made to our community and it will not be forgotten. And just want to say thank you. It's our honor to honor him.
Commissioner Borgson, I see you. Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, if I may, my, sorry, I can't be there in person today, but wanted to add my condolences to the family and thank them for coming forward with such a strong message of the importance of speaking out about depression and mental health. And maybe as time goes by and things settle down a little bit, we can get together and talk about how to work, work together on those issues because you hit it that it's a very important issue that needs to be talked about. And I thank you for coming forward in a very public way to talk about it. And again, just hope that you find peace as you move forward in your lives without Joe, but know that he's in many hearts.
With that, we do have a motion to second. I'll ask for the roll call by Zoom, the vote here. But note, Mayor, I have the proclamation. After the vote, we will take a 10-minute recess and we'll come back promptly at 10:30 to allow the board members that want to express their remarks with the mayor. And if you're in the audience, use this time for a bathroom break or anything that matters. So after the vote, we'll take a 10-minute break and resume promptly at 10:30. Please vote.
Commissioner Borgson.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Borgson voting virtually, all other commissioners present voting in person.
Starting in two minutes. Starting in two minutes. Okay, if we can reconvene, I see some board members here. If we can reconvene now. We're going to come out of recess and, Mr. Clerk, if you're ready, we can just, we're just going to come out of recess. Item B under presentations is presentation by John Winkler with the Natural Resource District regarding dam site 10. This is how we're going to do it, since it's basically a discussion and with the board's consent on this. John, I'm going to give you 15 to 20 minutes after I give Commissioner Boyle a chance to explain what her deal is. For the board, since I know there's some questions around this, if the board's fine with unanimous consent, we will add another five-minute round. That will give three five-minute rounds of 15 minutes for the board to answer any questions they have. When they give their presentation and the board asks their question, I will then ask if there's anyone from the audience that wants to comment. It's not an action item, so there won't be a resolution in action. I'm just trying to make sure everybody's get their chance to, to speak. For the public, you'll get one five-minute shot to go at this and go from there. So with that, Commissioner Boyle?
Yeah, thank you. So a couple of weeks ago, a group of citizens who live in the valley of the Papio Valley came to us to just voice some concerns about the use of eminent domain to obtain some property in order for the building of a dam site in their area. And so when they, they spoke to us, a lot of the, the information was just, it was, it was new to us, to be honest with, or new to me, I should say. And I just wanted to get some more information on it. So the things they said were very compelling about why they, a dam shouldn't, should not be built there. And in all fairness, it's not a bad idea to have, obviously, the, the folks who are building the dam, the dam to come and speak to us as to why this may be done. I know that there's, in the next several months, there's going to be a, a new floodplain map coming about that will probably help explain some of those things. But in the meantime, again, we thought we'd just gather some information, determine the information about the dam site specifically, if there are other ways to, to mitigate water damage and flooding, and really the cost benefit to it all as to, if there are other alternatives that would be more palatable to the, the citizens who would be losing their property due to eminent, eminent domain. So with that, I've asked that John Winkler, who's the, with the NRD, to come and speak to, speak to the, the NRD's points, just to, to, again, get more information. So thanks for coming, John.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, and my name is John Winkler. I'm the general manager of the Papio Missouri River NRD. I have with me today Amanda Grant. She's one of our very talented water resources engineers. Also in attendance is a couple of my board members, Jim Thompson, the chairman, Ted Japp, who represents the northern part of our district, and then Larry Bradley, they're here in attendance also. I'm going to let Amanda explain some of the, basically, some of the technical data and some of the results of the study. This is the Papillion Creek Watershed General Investigation Study that was conducted by the Corps of Engineers. The NRD was a partner in that study. However, it is a core study, so a lot of the technical processes and, and of those types of things that they used for their internal analysis, we don't have intimate knowledge of, but we can help kind of walk you through it. So I'll turn it over to Amanda, and then I'll come back and explain kind of what the next steps are, where we are in the process, and where do we go from here. So Amanda?
Thank you. And good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for having us here today. You have some handouts, and I'm going to attempt to put those up here so that the folks in the audience can see this as well. Okay, oh, good. Okay, so as John mentioned, we, the Papio NRD did co-share with the Corps of Engineers to complete this study. And I'm the project manager on the Papio NRD side, so worked pretty closely with the Corps as they did the analysis and conducted the study. So I just want to give you a quick background on how we got to, to even working on the study, and then also talk to you a little bit about the results of that study. So the, the Papio Creek Watershed has a flood history. It's had a flood history for a very long time back. It also has a very long history of being studied. It was initially studied by the Corps of Engineers in the early 60s as a result of some flooding. And if you may have heard of that plan, there's 21 dams proposed at that time. Four of those were built by the Corps. That would be Zarinski, Weerspan, Standing Bear, Cunningham. And then as the years went on, the Corps did participate in the watershed flood control by working on some channels and some lower-level levees to help prevent some flooding. And they also put in a flood warning system. And their involvement ended maybe in the early 1990s. So since that time, really, the Papio NRD and the surrounding, the communities in the watershed have worked together to implement some more flood control measures. So in 2018, there was an opportunity for the Corps of Engineers to get back involved in the study of the watershed through this general reevaluation report. So that's the study we're talking about today. We co-shared with them so we could have another perspective and also the potential of federal funding to help take another look at flood risk in the watershed and what projects could be implemented. So that's the history. The study started, as I mentioned, in 2018. It's a three-year study. It's posted online. It's a huge study, and there's a lot of information and a lot of analysis that went into this study. But the result is the first handout. How we started was really just a huge array of possibilities that, and alternatives that could help reduce flood risk and improve life safety in the watershed. So we started with a huge list, and then they whittled those down according to, they have very specific procedures for these federal studies because you're comparing on a nationwide level what the cost benefits are across the nation to compete with other projects. So they have a very regimented schedule. So we went through this big array of alternatives, narrowed it down. We had a number of public meetings at different spots during this study. And the final outcome were the items that met the benefit-cost ratio according to their analysis, and those are two dam sites, dam site 19, which is in the Gretna jurisdiction in Sarpy County, and then two in the Douglas County area. That would be dam site 10. And then a new levee and flood wall on the Little Papillion Creek, and that's from about Cass Street to Saddle Creek. So those are the structural components of the study. And then the second handout is the non-structural measures that were, that are a part of the recommended plan. And this is pretty exciting. This is, this gives us the opportunity to do something we haven't in the past, which is to get some federal money in to work on individual floodproofing. We call it non-structural. It's dry floodproofing, elevating structures, filling in basements, just reducing the risk on an individual level. And there was about 380-some properties that were eligible for that. And so we've included those as part of the plan, and this would be a voluntary type of thing, but it really provides a lot of benefit on an individual level. So today, though, we'll talk about the structural projects, probably most of interest to you, the ones in Douglas County. This is dam site 10. This is a preliminary-type conceptual-level design for dam site 10. The dam itself would be just north of Highway 36, and then the flood pool extends up into Washington County. So the, to note about this, this is a dry dam. And what that means is that during times of normal flow, the water would just run through the dam. There's an outlet works, and it would run through as normal. The land that's in the flood easements would be able to stay in the use that it is now, farmed or acreage land. And then in times of high rain events, it would store that water and hold it back and release it slowly down Thomas Creek. So this is on Thomas Creek, which runs into the Little Papillion Creek. So this is one of the components that helps along the Little Papillion Creek. Dam site 10 reduces flows from Thomas Creek all the way down the Little Papillion Creek to Mercy Road. So that is a, a long way, and it provides a big benefit through the city, and that is why it has remained in the plan. So this, this next handout is the second component of that project that works all together for the Little Papillion Creek. And this is new levee and flood wall. It runs from, on both sides of the Little Papillion Creek, from about Cass Streets down to Saddle Creek. So what you're looking at on the screen and the handout is the hundred-year floodplain as proposed. Commissioner Boyle mentioned these new flood maps, which we'll talk about in a minute, but we have had a new flood, flood study that's been completed for a while, and it's just awaiting being printed on maps. So you are looking at what that floodplain looks like through, that's basically showing your Cass Dodge Street down to center Mercy Road. And the levee would be the red line on the, on the right side that has, shows the floodplain contained within the channel there. So that's the combination of reduced flows from the dam site 10 structure and the levee floodwalls through, from Cass together pull the floodplain in, into the creek. So it really dramatically reduces the flood risk through that area. And I will note that without the reduction of flows from dam site 10, just floodwalls and levees on the Little Papillion Creek get much larger, more expensive, and make it infeasible in the fact that the closure structures are pieces that, of the levee that happen, like roads and bridges where they're, the roads maybe not high enough, so you can build the land in between the road higher, but you need to close off these low points. So without dam site 10, there's a much larger number of closure structures needed, and they get to be, whoops, too, kind of too big to handle. Like at Dodge Street, it would be an eight-foot closure, which generally four feet is about the realistic level that you can, you know, use automated closures or some other form, but eight feet is a lot at 72nd and Dodge to, to handle. So the combination of those two are what provided the largest benefit cost for the study. And so the reason that these projects are so important, and I might, I don't know if I can even zoom out enough for this, but I think if I just maybe kind of shut that up in the right area. So the, the flood maps, I mean, there's existing flood zones throughout this area anyway, and they're, you know, quite large through that area as well. This is on the Little Papillion Creek. But with the new flood study that's coming out, the flood, it, it's different in different places. In some cases, you'll see a reduction in floodplain, and some you'll see an increase in floodplain. There was a lot of factors that went into the new flood maps, so there's, there's quite a bit of variance. But what you're looking at on the screen and your handout is the black hatched area is the existing floodplain, and the yellow is the proposed floodplain that we expect to see mapped sometime in September of this year. So up around Dodge Street, the floodplain was reduced a little bit with the new study. But as you can see, moving south down the Little Papillion, there's increases of four feet of flood elevation down through the Little Papio. So, I mean, these projects are important, given the flood risk that, well, the flood risk that exists today really is the yellow, but the, whether old maps or the new proposed maps, these projects provide a benefit. There's just more of a benefit with the existing flood risk. So with that, that kind of, that describes the structural components that are through Douglas County. And so I'm going to let John talk a little bit about how you go, it would be proposed to go from study through an implementation of these projects.
Amanda, real quick, can we get your last name for the record?
Grant.
Thank you.
So if you go to the last page of the handout, it's kind of the next steps. So we're at, right now, the transmittal of the final report to Corps Headquarters. Now, this has been through the district office here in Omaha. It's been through the division Corps Office in Oregon, and now it goes to headquarters for a final review, and then the chief's report. So this has literally been through hundreds of Corps personnel, various departments within the Corps, and then it's also reviewed by an independent peer review, engineers that the Corps contracts with to review their studies to make sure all the numbers and everything is accurate. So it would get achieved, this is, these are best-case scenarios. Now, I think we all know how Congress operates and, and some of the core processes at the federal level, so this would be best-case scenario, anticipated design schedule, the earliest congressional authorization would be 2022, probably in a word of bill. But again, these are very, these are very generous schedules. It's probably more like a 10-year or longer type of process to get these in place. So, so here's basically where, where we're at. So we have identified a problem. There's always been a significant flood risk problem in the Papillion Creek watershed since forever, since Omaha was a, a community. So there's public health, safety, and property that is subject to flooding. We have floodplains that are growing. We have critical infrastructure that is in place that is also in jeopardy, not only businesses and homes, but we have a, a expanding and ever-expanding floodplain in these reaches that aren't controlled by structures, either levees or reservoirs. So we're at the stage where the technical, professional folks have studied the watershed, restudied the watershed multiple times, and they found out what's technically, legally, and economically feasible. What could reduce this floodplain? What could protect property? What could protect lives? And trying to mitigate those risks to people. So the technical piece is done, and will be transferred for review to make sure all those numbers are correct. Now it gets into the political process. So it's, it's county boards, it's city councils, it's NRD boards, it's congressional members that have to determine the best course of action, and is this, is it practical? Is it feasible? Is it politically viable to build? I can tell you from the NRD's perspective, we have six priority reservoirs in other parts of the, the watershed that we're trying to get constructed before development consumes it. We've already lost one to development, and right now, we used to approach landowners to buy, buy property. Now I've got a list in my office that has probably 18 to $20 million worth of offers from landowners to buy property to build these, these reservoirs, and we don't have the funds to do it. But, but also, we don't have the, the luxury of serving only one constituency. We have a six-county district that goes all the way from South Sioux City to the plat of the Missouri and the, and the Platte River. And so we have to, we have to serve that entire constituency. And so we've identified a problem, and so we have to share that with everybody, sharing with county commissioners, and sharing with landowners, business owners, property owners to say, hey, this is changing, and it's going to affect your business. It's going to affect your home. I sit on the Region Five FEMA Advisory, or Region Seven FEMA Advisory Council, and we've been notified that flood insurance premiums are going up seven to 25% for commercial and 7% for residential. So just a modest home that has a mortgage, you're going to pay $300 a month in flood insurance premiums that you may not have had to pay for, but now all of a sudden, with new maps, you will be forced to do that. And businesses, you can't even get a, a business quote without going to an insurance agent to get a quote for paying flood insurance. So it has significant impacts, not only on flood insurance, but also the future development of those areas that get put into the floodplain. And there was an article in the World Herald just the other day about, you know, the, the watershed's growing and will be filled in what, 21 years, 22 years? The entire watershed, and so now we're going to look to go to infill in those urban areas for development. Well, so you can't develop an all-in-flood way, and there's serious restrictions to develop in a floodplain that make it prohibitively expensive for folks to do that. So these are all important information that we need to get out to everybody. Now ultimately, it's up to elected folks if this is something that they want to do. The technical staff has done their job, and, and here's the data. And so then we have to make those decisions. So that's where we're at today. We'd be happy to answer any questions that, that you might have, and, and maybe there's some folks that are impacted that would like to talk, but, so be happy to open up to any questions.
Okay, we'll start with the board. I'm looking, Commissioner Boyle?
Yep, yeah, so from what I understand, I, I think I'd like more specifics on what alternatives are out there. As, as you know, there are other ways to mitigate As, as you know, there are other ways to mitigate flood risk. And so does it, does it have to be a dam? Can it be the, the, the dry dam or the, the dry dam and then levees? I mean, what, there are horticultural things that can be done, of course, to make that, to make that work too. And then this is a huge, this, this is a huge, a very costly project. And so I know some of it would be given federally and some of it would be given by the NRD. But, but is there a way to just, I, I'm sure this has all been analyzed, but is there a way to look at other, less expensive ways to proceed with something like this too?
So it's sixty-five percent federal, thirty-five percent local shares. And that would all be federal, sixty-five percent would be federal fund. So Amanda, you can.
And the whole process, from what I understand, is over a hundred, a hundred million dollars?
That, that's for the total, that's for all the, that's for the entire state. That's for the non-structural, two reservoirs, for the, the levy raises and the channel winding and all that. So that's total.
Yeah, correct. And, and in, in the report, they, they walk through the alternatives, analysis steps, you know, and you can see the initial array of things that were looked at. So I, I don't know if I can name them all, but there, there were a number of things that included, you know, buyouts, street and bridge raises, low impact development, you know, things like that. And, and if that's maybe what you're thinking of, like the horticulture type things, that was ruled out by the Corps of Engineers. And, and we have also ruled that out as a flood control measure through some of the studies that we've done at the Papio NRD because of the fact that they're intended to handle and treat small storm and rain events and not these large storms where there's an enormous amount of water to detain.
I guess the other question too is, is there another location of a potential dam?
Yeah, so the location of those is intended to maximize the upper drainage area that they can capture. Because if you start moving them upstream, you've got less of the watershed and less of a benefit, if that makes sense. So there's, there is some play to moving them around. And that's really been done a lot over the years. Dam Site Ten.
I mean, Cal.
Dam Site Ten has been, it was one of the identified structures from the nineteen sixty-four plan. So there's been little adjustments throughout time on that. But that can always be looked at too, some minor adjustments.
And typically, a, a dam site location that was good in the nineteen forties or fifties is still a, a good dam site location today just because of the geography of where you have to place them. So they're, they're difficult, they can be adjusted, but they're difficult just to pick up and move and get the same benefit. One thing too, that on the other type of, other type of processes that we looked at or, or strategies we looked at to control flooding, is FEMA doesn't recognize some of those as actual flood control. So you may, so for example, low impact development, you'll hear that a lot. And it's good for water quality, it's good for the smaller storms. In fact, we have a program that supports rain gardens. But those are quickly overwhelmed in a, in a major storm or a significant storm event. And so there's other issues too, they have to be operated and maintained in perpetuity. And so FEMA doesn't recognize those to provide flood control that would affect a floodplain map. So you could literally build these alternative structures and your floodplain would still look the same and have, and still have the same impacts. So, but those are all things that you have to take into consideration.
The other thing too is from what I understand, after a dam site is built, then there's a lot of maintenance required. And usually that falls to taxpayers in a different way. Usually I believe the city is responsible for, for taking care of that. So, so the cost, I think, is even higher than the cost set forth just for building it. So, so I guess who, who maintains the?
So the NRD maintains the, the dams in, in perpetuity. You have to have a, now, when we construct them, we usually give the park area, we donate that or give that to the municipality that is located. And they operate, maintain it, they mow the grass. You'll, you'll find that the operation maintenance on several regional structures is far less than, I think it was when we looked at the, kind of the, the low impact development, I think it was sixteen hundred? Is that correct? Yeah, the equivalent to get sixteen hundred structures. And, and who maintains those? And so, and you'll, you'll see these around town, they're, they're typically, you know, overgrown or, I mean, they, they take time and effort too. So typically with small, with, with regional structures, you only have a, a limited number and you already have the system in place to do that. And we do that now.
Okay, Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. And John, good to see you again, thanks for the report and, and thank you both. I, I was saying earlier about, I don't know, forty-five minutes ago, maybe a half an hour ago, that I'm a man of many words. I didn't have many words forty-five minutes ago, I have tons here, but I'm, I'm not gonna go that deep, right? I mean, you've heard me before, you don't, you don't need to do that again. I, I, I can tell you that I've had some decent, I've had some decent dialogue with proponent, you know, people in favor of the dam site ten over the last week or so, you know. John, I'm sure you and I will talk about it. Some attorneys, some business owners, stuff like that. I would also point out, or at least make, make the, put the idea out there that I don't know that a lot of that dialogue would have actually occurred had we not passed that resolution. Somebody said, well, somebody had actually pointed out, well, what right did you have to actually pass the resolution? We had every right, we had every right to do that. The question is, does it have any teeth? I mean, i- is there anything you can do with a resolution like that? Does it, does it give the public pause? Does it give insurance companies pause? Does it give the feds pause? Personally, I don't think so. But I voted, I guess I voted yes and I promoted this because in, in a lot of ways, you guys, I'm the only representation for a significant portion of the citizens affected or the landowners affected by this project. So, and further, I, and I, and I said this a couple of weeks ago, I, and John, this won't surprise you, I hate eminent domain. I, I loathe it. Pursuant to the fifth, to, to the Fifth Amendment to the Constitution of the United States, a government can acquire, the government can acquire real, real and personal belongings of any citizen for public purpose and the person should be provided just compensation. I still don't like it. And I think it should be rare and I think it should, it should be, it should be certain and it should be very rare. You guys, folks, this is far from certain. I mean, th- they've been arguing about, you even mentioned this, they've been arguing about this for years. The data that I have is far from certain. And unfortunately, I, I love a lot of the work the NRD does, the Papio Missouri NRD, I've seen it, I know it. I participated in it, I, I like it. But, but what's happening here is far from rare. I mean, like, I, I would ask the question, I, I would, I would almost sum it up. I'd, I'd like, I'd like some input on some other items. But what I'm, what I'm curious about is, in the spring of twenty nineteen, heavy rainfall and rapid snowmelt caused catastrophic flooding all across Nebraska. Three quarters of the counties in Nebraska actually got federal disaster relief. Of the ninety-three counties, one point five billion, close to one point five billion dollars. That's what kind of damage we had. Sixteen federal levees were overtopped and breached. An additional nine federal levees were overtopped but didn't breach. Four non-federal levees were overtopped and breached. My question is this, the far from certain thought process that I laid out there would carry itself to this project? I mean, to the best of my knowledge, a lot of that disaster relief didn't occur. I, I could be wrong about this, but the lower Elkhorn, the lower plat, Dakota, Thurston and Burt Counties, and for the most part, the Papio Missouri NRD, we weren't part of that major disaster. We, we had problems, we had issues. God bless the landowners that did have those. I guess the question is, and I'd end it here, if it's far from certain and I'm right, when can we come to some certainty? We take people's land and we build a dam? When are we gonna get to the point where we're actually certain? Because I wasn't certain that sixteen federal levees were gonna be overtopped and breached because of a bunch of snow, rapid snowmelt and heavy rainfall. Look, I'll get off my soapbox, but this concerns me greatly for a variety of reasons. And again, keeping in mind that I like the work the Core and the NRD does. I just wanna be very, very careful, certain and rare when we, when we implement eminent domain. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
John, I'll give you time to answer the question.
So a couple of things, in, in two thousand nineteen, we were obviously very intimate in that whole process of flood recovery, recovery, obviously the NRD. The reason we didn't have significant damage within the Omaha Papillion Creek area, the Omaha metro area, is because of the work we in the Core have done for the last fifty years or sixty years. The reservoirs worked, the levees worked. Now, the reason you had damage, giving you damage outside, especially the plat and especially the Elkhorn, there's no controls. There's no reservoirs on those particular rivers. There's really no significant levy systems along those rivers. And the reason the Missouri River and that all the damages that happened to those levees, it was pretty much all south of the mouth of the plat river. And the reason was is the plat river was flowing at a greater or equal capacity as the Missouri River was during that event. So anything south of there, those levees were never designed for a thousand year event. And so it was close to a thousand year event, those levees failed. This two thousand nineteen event was all about the uncontrolled tributaries. No reservoirs, no significant levy systems. And those that did not have those, those were your biggest flooding threats. The Omaha metro area, we're not patting ourselves on the back. But hey, all that work and all that investment we did over the years, everything worked impeccably. No breaches, no failures, hardly any damage within the Omaha metro area. Now, of course, that doesn't count the plat, the Elkhorns and the Missouri south of the Omaha metro area. That's where they ran into problems. One thing, I, I heard this from a, an old Core employee. There's really no, you cannot design a system that's one hundred percent effective at anything. Flood control is no exception. And he made a comment one time, he said, mother nature always bats last. So we could design whatever, our engineers are brilliant. We could do, we could design a lot of different things. But there's always going to be, or there's potentially is going to be that one event that's combined with some other event that makes it, that the system can't handle it. So you're always in that particular point. You can never guarantee one hundred percent that you won't get an event that overtops your systems. It just, it's impossible to do. So I hope that answers some of your questions, Mike.
I'm looking around, okay. Maureen Boyle, then we come back, Mike.
Yep, just if, like, as you said, mother, mother nature always bats last. And if we did so well with that last flooding, potential flooding event that really didn't seem to hit, it's like, what guarantees do we have that doing this will, will prevent it too? I mean, a thousand year flood, everything kind of held. And so is this really even necessary in the, the first place?
Well, it probably wasn't a thousand year event within the, within the watershed. Because again, a lot of that water came from other parts of the state. The Elkhorns and other tributaries to the plat all contributed that, to that. It was a significant event in Omaha, but it wasn't a thousand year event. It was all those, all those from the Missouri, the plat, the Elkhorn, the Salt Creeks, all those Elkhorns that contributed to that event along the Missouri River south. So I don't even know if we had a classification for that event that happened. But every day it rains, for example, the last two days, all the flood control structures that are built provide a benefit. And the Core used to calculate it, they don't even calculate anymore, but you're talking millions of dollars. Every single rain event, there is, these structures are working to prevent flooding. No matter what the rain event is, it could be insignificant, it could be significant. They're always working, they're always providing a benefit. And, and just in here, so you're talking about four and a half billion of, of expected valuation or expected dam. And then you're talking annual damages of fourteen million. So that, that, so that's, that's the, what we're trying to kind of either control or, or mitigate in some form. Again, there's, there's no system that can be defined that will give you one hundred percent certainty that these things will not occur. Now, it may give you ninety-nine point nine or ninety-nine or ninety-eight, but it'll never give you a hundred.
Commissioner Friend, I'm gonna go to, I didn't see Commissioner Kavanaugh's hand, then I'll come back to you, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Thanks for this report. I remember in the nineteen sixties going out with my father, who was chairman of this board, during a massive flood of the Papio, at that time uncontrolled by any dams or watersheds or anything. And traveling in a very high four-wheel drive Jeep threw water over the headlights to Ralston from our home in South Omaha, which was virtually cut off. All of the property that is adjacent to that floodplain was underwater. And I'd be interested in this map that you provided us, if it went south to Harrison Street, what that floodplain would look like.
We can provide you that too.
This is truly scary. This was as a result of a massive downpour. I, I remember it might have been like ten or twelve inches during a very short period of time. And that doesn't happen anymore because of the dams that have been built. And that's because of the action that my father and others on this board took with their colleagues to protect what at that time were probably millions of dollars, which is now billions of dollars of property and thousands of property owners. I understand the concern of the couple of dozen property owners who are affected by dam site ten. I would point out though, I represent these people. This map runs through the heart of my district. This floodplain affects thousands of my constituents, hundreds of my businesses, if not more, and billions of dollars of property, taxpaying property. And I've heard from those people. And they're concerned because it's difficult for them to get insurance, it's difficult for them to plan. And this is a modest proposal impacting a few dozen people to protect thousands of people and billions of dollars in my district. So I'm gonna ask you to join me for a series of town halls in this floodplain, among people that you can see affected by this, to explain to them this project, which is going to save their property from flooding, like I saw with my own eyes back in the sixties in a different branch of the same floodplain. Figure seventeen here is very interesting. But again, I'd, I'd like to see it expanded so that we can get the entire Douglas County from Washington County to Sarpy County example. But if I see this correctly, figure A is without this project, figure B is with this project.
That's correct.
That's the damage that we're trying to control. And that's, again, thousands of people, hundreds of businesses, billions of dollars. And upstream, I don't know, how many property owners are affected by dam site ten?
I believe there's forty properties.
Fine, just to put it in perspective. The insurance numbers that you indicate flood insurance going up seven to twenty-five.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, can I, can I give you one break? Say that again, I missed it, forty, how many, forty who?
Forty properties. They're not forty individual owners, 'cause some people own more than one, but forty properties.
Right, sorry, sorry. And I don't know if we can estimate the number of properties in these floodplain, but that'll be an interesting figure to have, and maybe the Core did that in their study. It would be several zeros after forty, I'm sure. And the seven to twenty-five percent increase in flood insurance for commercial properties, and I believe you said seven percent increase for residential property.
Seven percent for res- residential, twenty-five percent for commercial, which will continue, I think, from the years in the future, in the future.
That'd have to be a pretty substantial number. And somebody, I mean, I've worked with the insurance industry for years. Somebody in the insurance industry has that number. And, you know, if we're, if we're doing a cost benefit analysis, the cost of a dry dam affecting forty properties and the cost of the flood damage or just the premiums on the increased flood insurance to these residents and businesses is something that I'd like to explore. From a statutory authority point of view, Commissioner Friend pointed out that we passed this basically two.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, I'm gonna stop you before you get into the heart of it. I might be going back, right back to you after Commissioner Friend, but I just wanted to not let you get too deep in that. Commissioner Friend will come back.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So you guys, one of, one of the things that I'm struggling with is, is a little bit of the dialogue that you had with, with Dr. Boyle, Commissioner Dr. Maureen Boyle, that's getting longer and longer every day. Commissioner Dr. Maureen Boyle, uh, that's getting longer and longer every day. Is there, the question I would ask is, eh, eh, the work that's been done here has been successful. It's, it's quite, uh, quite an accomplishment. It begs the question is, how much is enough? Um, the old Wall Street term, how many yachts can you waterski behind? How much development is actually going to occur on this dam site, um, between Washington County and Douglas County? How many developers are involved in this project? I mean, there's all kinds of things underneath the carpet that I'd like to know about. I would point this out, though, and Commissioner Kavanaugh just brought up this point, the cost-benefit ratio. I'd like to talk about a cost-benef- uh, the benefit-cost ratios and four alternatives that, uh, for flood mitigation plans for the Papio Creek where DS Ten is gonna be. I mean, so in other words, if you don't build a dry dam, if you don't build any dam, if you don't create another Lake Cunningham, for example, by the way, which is directly south of where this, you know, where the dam site is. If you don't do that, are there other mitigating factors that could really satisfy the need for this community instead of actually claiming eminent domain on forty properties?
Well, I can speak a little bit to the, so the alternatives that the Corps of Engineers looked at.
You'll move a little closer to the mic.
Yeah. Um, so the alternatives that the Corps of Engineers looked at in this study is a no-action plan, of course. And then a, they did look at just new levee flood wall alternative from Cass to Saddle Creek. And I believe that's documented. But I mentioned in that brief summary that it gets, the levee gets tall, the closure structures get hard to build, and it didn't provide the best benefit-cost ratio. So, the combination of the Dam Site Ten and the levees is what provides the highest benefit-cost ratio. And then they take that even one step further, and they say, now that we have this combined project, what, um, does setting the levee at the hundred-year, does setting the levee at the hundred-plus-three, the hundred-plus-five year? And this kind of gets to the, how, how, how much flood risk reduction can they provide and still get a benefit-cost ratio that's acceptable? So, all of those things are things that go into their study. And the result of that optimization was Dam Site Ten, the levee flood wall with three feet of freeboard. And that's what gives the largest benefit-cost ratio.
Yeah, Commissioner Friend, there, there's, I mean, you, so you could do limit, you could do limited. Wha- what can you get, what can you do? What is politically palpable to do? And you, you could do those things. Now, you may shrink your risk a little bit, a- and, and that's fine. So, I guess you get, you have to get to a point, like you said, how many yachts are enough? We haven't had the one hundred-year storm event in the Omaha Metro area since, I don't know when. We haven't had that big rainfall event that these maps are based off of. So, we don't, we haven't seen what the system would do.
No, eh, eh, sorry for interrupting you, John. No, we just have. I, I, I just pointed out, in the spring of twenty nineteen, we had a hundred-year flood.
Eh, eh.
Three-quarters of the state actually took one-point-five billion. Eh, here's my point, and I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's fine.
That, that doesn't hold water. I mean, it's, it's one of the reasons that I was so adamant about a resolution like this. I mean, eh, what type of mitigation factors are actually occurring with the lower Elkhorn N R D? What type of mitigation factors are occurring with the lower platte? What type of things are we doing with Dakota, Thurston, Burke Counties? Is it just building dams in Washington and, and Douglas County that actually mitigate these factors? That's my point to the, uh, uh, to the benefit-cost ratios. There are other ways to skin this cat. But instead of that, we're gonna take forty landowners, and we're gonna say, "Oh, by the way, because we have constitutional authority and because the Corps can do it, and because the N R D can do it, we're gonna go ahead and do it." Because we're gonna make sure that that hundred-year flood doesn't hit us in Douglas County, even though it just affected three-quarters of the state. I guess the thing that irks me, eh, doesn't, not you guys, the thing that irks me a little bit is that I don't have clean, clear data. And I, and I have a, I have a heck of a lot of trouble taking people's land away without having certainty and an understanding that the, that the factors are not already mitigated. I mean, John, eh, 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 I do pat you guys on the back. That because we didn't have what a lot of the other state has, eh, eh, is a, is a huge high five to the Papio Missouri N R D. Thank you.
You got an answer, John?
Eh, if you, if you.
Yeah, quickly, come on.
Okay, so, well, first of all, no, no one has threatened eminent domain. And, and so, that, throwing that out there, our, our Board bends over backwards not to, to implement that, or not to, to go that step. So, we, so get, we can address that. But, um, again, so, we're flexible. We can, we can do whatever is palpable to the majority of the people. And if that's not a hundred percent flood protection, that's not a hundred percent, which we never could get there anyway. But, so we, there's varying levels that we can do. Uh, we've simply come forward and saying, and the Corps is saying, what meets their, their methodology, the biggest, biggest benefit to cost is this plan. Now, if you wanna do something different, we'd be more than happy to, to entertain that or even participate. But the, you're not gonna get the federal funds, which, okay, we'll, then we'll pay for it on our own. Um, it's been surmised by some that, why don't we just use eminent domain and buy everybody out of the floodplain and move them? Well, that would be multiple billions of dollars or hundreds of millions of dollars. And then what do we do with those? Is it okay to exercise eminent domain on those folks? So, so, so there, these are the decisions that we have to make. I don't, I don't think we're, we're trying to ram any, any solution down anyone's throat. We're saying, here's your problem, here's a solution that we can get sixty-five percent federal funding. If we choose to pass on that, then it's on us. And if we do something different, that's great. But then we have to figure out, how are we gonna pay for it? What are the benefits? There's a cost of doing nothing. We could absolutely walk away and say, "Sorry, there's no agreement." And we walk away and just say, "Hey, you folks that are now in the floodplain or it's expanded, you, you're on your own." So, so that, so there is a, there is a, a, a cost to do something, there is a cost to do nothing, and there's in-between. And so, that's what we're, we're trying to, to work on. And, and we don't want it to be adversarial. We wanna, we wanna work with everybody. No one wants to take anybody's property. No one wants to do that. But there is consequences to our, to not doing something or to doing something.
Good. Commissioner Kavanaugh, back to you.
Thank you. Um, the difference between a rainfall flood and the kind of floods that happened on the rivers is the difference between night and day. I understand that. We're talking rainfall floods. We're not talking snowmelt floods like we've experienced on the Elkhorn and the platte most recently. Those are different kinds of things. And I'm no water expert, but I cannot understand the difference between rainfall and snowmelt. And the spring floods that we get annually are not because of rainfall. They're because of the snow melts up in the mountains and it floods our rivers down here on the plain.
And, and what compounds that, uh, Commissioner Kavanaugh, is ice. We had two feet of ice on the rivers in nineteen, so that compound.
And we're not talking about that today. What I would like to see is that catastrophe, hundred-year flood impact in the nineteen sixties. You must have records of that. I know the county does. I wanna see that map as well, because that was pre-any flood, uh, control. And we paid through the nose for that. So, what we're talking about here, and expand this map, is something I'd like to see, because this is thousands and thousands and thousands of people, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of businesses. They're reaching out to me, and I'm presuming the other commissioners are gonna hear from them, because insurance companies, who are real good at estimating risk, are saying, "You have risk, and therefore, your premiums is going up." Those are thousands and thousands of Douglas County taxpayers and businesses. I represent a bunch of those people. I wanna drill down on that. The forty people up north are not in my district, and many of them not even in Douglas County. But I don't know if there's an equivalency here. Uh, the eminent domain thing is something I'm concerned about. I wish, uh, Commissioner Friend was here a year or two ago, because I fought the use of eminent domain by this board. And I'm not excited about that. But every once in a while, you have to do this cost-benefit analysis. And this is so out of whack that I would urge you to come and discuss this with me. I'm gonna do a series of town halls. All along this floodplain, I see, you know, big businesses like Nebraska Furniture Mart, Lowe's, Exarban Village, U and O, the Baxter Arena, just on this map. And, you know, I wanna flesh that out and see what, what is the scope of the, uh, potential risk here? But what I would like to know, and going back to the, again, I, I guess you would call it toothless resolution that we passed, um, that I did not support. Does Douglas County, the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, have any statutory authority over this?
I believe the study's in Omaha zoning jurisdiction. Um, so, eh, eh, no, I mean.
That'd be a question, I mean, I, I'd like our county attorney to look at that. I'm not asking for a, a, a quick decision on this, but you're representative as well. I'd like to get a legal opinion. I mean, you know, this, this is great information to have, and I'm glad that you're looking to protect billions of dollars of Douglas County property tax-paying property. But this board doesn't really have statutory authority to do anything on this. It's more information, which is good than anything else. Um, so, I'd like an answer to that question, if you could. Uh, and, um, the ability to have the public understand the risk here, I think, is the major thing here today. I don't think anybody was aware that this huge swath of prime Douglas County real estate is at risk from flooding if we don't do a very modest dry dam upstream that's not really gonna displace anybody. Uh, as I understand, they can still farm the ground unless it's flooded, unless the hundred-year flood happens.
That's correct, yeah, that's correct. You can still utilize it for farming, if it's a dry dam. Only during those times of high water with their.
Well, I wanna thank you and the, uh, commissioners, uh, from the N R D who's taken the time out today. I don't know if there are any, uh, affected businesses, I'd like to hear from them, uh, as well. I've already heard from a lot of people who live and work in this floodplain are very, very concerned about their properties. So, thank you.
Well, we wanna thank you for, for having us. And, and any commissioner and, and I've talked.
You got one more question.
Oh, sorry.
Hold up, Kent, can you mic up, uh, Commissioner Kavanaugh's question? I had asked Patrick to put Kent on to answer that, 'cause that was a question I had. Kent, you wanna answer how much of this is in our zoning jurisdiction and any other related information to what Commissioner Kavanaugh asked?
Uh, yes, thank you, Commissioner. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you're good.
Um, uh, I could share my screen. I can, I can show you the jurisdiction map if you'd like.
Yeah, go with it. Oh, I don't know if Dan needs to, oh, okay, you got it, never mind.
Uh, can you see that okay now?
I don't see where the, where the properties are in our.
Look behind you, that's a little bigger.
Where the properties are in our zoning authority.
Look over your shoulder, that might be a little bigger for you.
I'm looking right at the screen.
But the bigger one.
Okay. This is the, uh, this is Thomas Creek right here. My understanding is they, uh, the, the structure is, i- is in this, is in this watershed right here. And the jurisdiction boundary, uh, the county's jurisdiction would come over to about right here, that dotted line. So, so you can see that, that's where we're talking about in terms of the county's jurisdiction. Uh, so, I, I, I don't have the, the project footprint laid out on this map, but this is where the, the county's jur- the jurisdiction line is. And everything right here is, uh, the City of Omaha zoning jurisdiction.
So, the overwhelming bulk of this appears to be in the city's zoning jurisdiction, is that right?
Uh, it appears to be, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Morgan.
Okay, John, I appreciate the, uh, the work the N R D has done and does.
Thank you.
Uh, I, uh, the flood that he talks about, Commissioner Kavanaugh, in the sixties, was out there at Cold Creek, which is west of a hundred-and-fifth. And I know the situation back then from the rain and what took place in those days. It did not affect where you're talking about along Seventy-Eighth and Dodge, going toward Pacific and Sixtieth and so on. And you correct me if I'm stating something incorrectly.
I, I, uh, wasn't, eh, eh, I wasn't, eh, I didn't even.
You're too young.
Knowledge of that at that time.
You're too young.
I might have been around, but I didn't.
I'm ninety-four years old.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm a, I'm a, wait a minute, hold on. Um, let him finish, Commissioner Kavanaugh. Let him, let him finish, you, you got order with that. Come on. Commissioner Morgan, please, continue. Commissioner Kavanaugh, please.
So, I was working at the New Tower Hotel, which is right on the Papio. I presently own property on the map you gave us, an office there on Seventy-Eighth on the west side, which is right where you're going by. So, I'm not trying to be a smart aleck, but I know, 'cause in the fifties, I was working there as a dishwasher and busboy for Frank Blazek of the New Tower, which backed up to the Papio. That Papio did not flood in the fifties or sixties in that quarter. And I know it really, really well. And I worked at a gas station on the other side of Dodge, which was Graybo's. And that was there, and maybe if there's somebody as old as I am, they'd know that, too. So, what I think you're saying with this is year, the feeling is that wasn't, maybe we haven't had a hundred-year flood in the last seventy years. In my, and I know I'm correct about it flooding. Now, maybe an intersection was flooded with water, but the Papio did not overflow the banks running from Cass Street or up a little bit north of Cass, all the way to Sixtieth and Pacific, or where the racetrack was, and so on. You can correct me if you have some history of that.
I'll take your word for it, and I'll, I'll dig and go through the files, see if we can find anything. But I'll take your word.
So, I do wanna mention that, but that's the reservation or concern I have. And I am a property owner, and I know it's in the floodplain, and I pay the extra insurance. Not that I like to, but, eh, you know, I don't know. I have a little sharing of what Commissioner Friend said about the eminent domain on the people, and we'll hear from them. And speaking of, uh, Commissioner Friend, had he been here, I think the gentleman where we were gonna do eminent domain would have been glad if we had, 'cause that development never took place, uh, there. But, uh, and we didn't follow through on it either. We found an alternative.
Okay, um, you have one more time, Commissioner Kavanaugh. You wanna respond now to what you were trying to respond to?
You know, uh, this is gonna be real easy. Determine the location of that flood that I saw with my own eyes. Uh, so, please get us that, uh, information and show us that map. The Papio runs right across Q Street there where Horseman's Park is right now. That's notorious floodplain. That was all underwater. It's not Seventy-Eighth and Dodge, which is the top of the hill in Ralston. It's Seventy-Second and Dodge, a big difference. And, I don't know, a lot lower ground directly in the floodplain. The dams that were built helped alleviate that. So, please, supply us with the map so that we can clarify what's a historical fact and easily verifiable. Thank you.
Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I, I don't, uh, I don't know who to believe, the two old guys, uh, Commissioner Kavanaugh or Commissioner Morgan, but I, but I will say this, and, and this responds directly to it. The work that the Papio, uh, Missouri N R D and the work that the Corps of Engineers has done over the years has alleviated that problem. Okay? So, these guys are talking about when they're little kids, the water's up to their, you know, up to their windows in a car. These things, the, the mitigation factors and the things that you've been working on over the years have actually helped. Okay? So, my only point, and again, not to grandstand or do any crazy stuff, is that, John, you even mentioned you don't like eminent domain either. But what happens if you have five property owners and they go, "Heck no, we won't go." And this is a really, really important item. According to the statistics that you guys have, eminent domain will be enacted. It's been done before, and it'll, and it'll happen again. So, I'm not saying it, it will occur. I'm saying, I don't think the Corps and the N R D would be afraid of utilizing it if, if, if the, if the circumstances dictated. So, I would, so I would, I would sum up by saying this. Again, I need certain, I, th- th- this type of stuff should happen very rarely. On the Thomas Creek, I understand Lake Cunningham that goes down the little Papio, and, and, uh, Dam Site Ten goes down the Thomas Creek. I don't have numbers that indicate to me clear enough at this point that we've got a huge issue and Dam Site Ten actually needs to be built without implementing cost-benefit ratios before you move to that type of process. Now, again, this stuff's been going on for years. I'm coming late to the party, but I'm at the party now. And I, I'm gonna start popping some balloons, I guess. I don't know, I don't know. Uh, John, thank you for the ti- thank you both for the time. I, I really appreciate it. I did wanna turn it into a, you know, kind of weird debate. but I think, I think the dialogue's important and, and good, so thank you.
Commissioner Morgan.
Correct a statement made that Seventy-Eighth is on a hill, if you look at the crossroads, and I know the surveys because I've sold a ton of property there, including the crossroads, which I had listed back in nineteen eighty. The fact is, the crossroads, a target sets higher than Seventy-Eighth and Dodge by a long ways, there's not a hill there till you move out past Eighty-Fourth Street, that's what I was talking about, that that area had not flooded at all, and that's where the Papio runs, right under Seventy-Seventh and Dodge, where Buc-E's is building a new gas station. I mean, so it isn't Seventy-Eighth on a hill, as was stated, and Seventy-Second flat.
Yep, just really a final comment first and foremost, thank you for coming, we do appreciate the work you do, we appreciate the Corps of Engineers. I think the goal, and I'm alluding to what Commissioner Kavanaugh said, yeah, we, we really don't, don't have much that we can do jurisdiction wise as far as this goes, I think our, my, my real goal in putting this on the agenda was to just have a conversation about this, we heard what our constituents, our citizens, the people we represent, how they felt about this, and, and we needed to hear, it, it felt like a little bit of a bulldozer to just me, I'll say personally, just because I didn't know the other side, that's why I reached out to you to have you come, I wanted you to explain some of this, and if nothing else, again, this has been incredibly informational for us, we still may not like it, or bits and pieces of it, but at the same time, now we have some information to, to look at, to go by, and to help us gain more understanding, we have a groundwork now. So I, I really do appreciate that you came today, and you probably felt like you're a little bit on the chopping block, but that was not my intention, my intention was to get, get information, so, so thank you very much.
Okay, you gotta. No, it's on this, you gotta answer.
Yeah, I just want to.
Please, go ahead.
Yeah, okay, so, again, thank you, Dr. Commissioner Maureen Boyle, as long as that title is, but.
I don't know.
For reaching on it and calling, I mean, we appreciate this, to have dialogue and to present information, and, and we'll be happy to go to Commissioner Kavanaugh's district, or whosoever's district, and meet with citizens, whoever, I mean, that's, that's part of our role and job, is to get out there and educate and to provide information. You know, where we end up at the end of the day, maybe it's somewhere in between this or something else, I, I don't know, but we just want to make sure everybody where here are the impacts, now, when the maps do come out in September, hopefully it's this September, it was supposed to be June, and FEMA backed them up September, but when those maps come out, you're going to, there's going to be a lot more impacts. I mean, we just focused on a particular area, there's going to be impacts all over the watershed and all over the county. And so, you know, tho, and, you know, if those have separate strategies to help solve those, obviously, we will work toward that. Good news is, we may see some of the, some of the flood plain shrink, where we actually have structures in place. So I, we very much appreciate the dialogue, and we'll, we'll meet individually or group, however you want to. I did want to bring up one, at your last meeting, it was, somebody provided testimony that the N R Ds were somehow the, a huge taxing authority in the state, and that we, we were consuming a huge amount of public resources. So I provided our, our last budget fact sheet, and if you look, the, the N R Ds are limited by state statute to only four and a half cents, that's the maximum we can levy, and we're a little over three and a half here at the Papio. And so if you compare that to a school district, I'm the president of my school board in Lewisville, and I'm levying a buck nineteen. And then I go to work as the N R D and I get three and a half cents, and so, so it's a huge discrepancy, but, so we don't have unlimited resources, and that's why we do partner with the federal government, state, any local entity that would do that, help pay for these flood mitigation strategies. And so we, we don't, we are, we historically have been for the last fifty years, two percent or less of an overall property tax bill. So the N R Ds aren't this big consuming monster across the state of Nebraska, consuming natural resources and property taxes. That's just flat ass wrong, so, excuse my language, but that, that's just not correct. So, but I thank you for the opportunity to, to be here and to provide the information to you, thank you.
Seeing no more questions from the board, so for the public, I'm going to give you five minutes, and just know what I'm saying is, don't ask me for over five minutes, because if I give you five, I got to give somebody else over five, so that's not going to happen. Whatever order we come, if it's con, I'm going to go con, pro, or pro-con, and if there's nobody on the other side, then we'll keep going through, you, you got me. Okay, sir, no chore.
Thank you, my name is Ted Japp, I'm on the Board of Directors for the Papio Missouri River Natural Resources District, Subdistrict One, which includes Dam Site Ten.
You're pro?
Excuse me?
You're pro, I just want to make sure to be fair, you're pro, pro?
No.
You're no K, all right.
And I want to just also state that I have great respect for General Manager Winkler and the staff at the N R D, and I believe that we all work together actually very well on the vast majority of the projects that come along. And so I'm not complaining about the N R D in any way, shape, or form, however, as this board knows, not all board members walk lockstep together on every issue, and so I want to just point out where I differ from the N R D on some of these issues, you probably don't have the Corps of Engineers report in front of you, but I'll just reference to it. On Appendix One A, Dam Site Ten Hydrology, that was put out in January of twenty twenty-one, Figure Nine and Ten shows modeling based on a thirty-seven inch rainfall event over seventy-two hours, so thirty-seven inch rainfall event over three days. They call that the probable maximum precipitation, and according to the National Weather Service, the largest rainfall they've ever recorded at Epple Airfield is less than six and a half inches in August seventh nineteen ninety-nine. The wettest two-day period on record is August sixth and seventh nineteen ninety-nine, that was just under ten and a half inches, and yet they're modeling a thirty-seven inch rainfall over three days to produce the result I believe that they want to see. I could find no statistics on any three-day event, so using a thirty-seven point two inch rainfall event seems to me to be wildly speculative. In fact, it would overwhelm every flood protection measure that we have in the Omaha metro area, and so that makes no sense to me. Two years ago, a bomb cycle and a five-hundred-year event produced no significant flooding in the Papio metro basin other than at the confluence of the Papio, the Platte, and the Missouri rivers, which was completely overwhelmed by the water at that point. Omaha was spared from this five-hundred-year event miraculously without Dam Site Ten. And so, the full drainage area of Dam Site Ten is only about four point three square miles, that's a very tiny portion of the Papio watershed, which is over four hundred square miles, we're only dealing with about one percent of the Papio watershed. By putting a dam on Dam Site Ten up there, you're only protecting, there's only water draining, and just picture a little, little funnel coming into Dam Site Ten, it's only four point three square miles, the vast majority of that is farmland, and it's not, it's not rooftops, it's not sidewalks, it's not parking lots, it's not concrete, it's just dirt. And so most rain events soak directly right into the ground, in fact, there's terracing on properties up there that hold back an awful lot of water also, so what I'm trying to say is, four point three square miles drainage areas, one percent of the Papio watershed, and four point three square miles is also a very small percentage of the drainage area into the Little Papio Creek itself, the Little Papio is the portion of Papio that flows past Nebraska Furniture Mart and through Baxter Arena and U N O area and so forth, that's only four point three square miles, is a very small percentage of that. So all the water that falls anywhere other than this four point three square mile area above Dam Site Ten, that has no effect, Dam Site Ten has absolutely no effect on that Little Papillion Creek area, so keep that in mind also. And also, Commissioner Friend also mentioned about property rights, and I believe property rights are a foundational structure of our society also, we all want the quiet enjoyment of our property, and with the ability to improve it as we see fit, without the heavy hand of any government agency coming in trying to forcibly take it from us, for what I believe in this case appears to be questionable need and value. The N R D has six other water retention projects in various stages of design and acquisition, and to my knowledge, these projects have very willing sellers thus far, which most certainly is not the case in Dam Site Ten, where there is nearly unanimous opposition to this, many properties have been in the family for generations. I myself, I'm a fifth generation landowner in the Papio Valley up in Washington County, my great-great grandparents were among the original pioneers in Washington County who purchased land and lived in land along the Papio Creek, which I, to this day, do also, and the opposition to the Corps of Engineer projects is kind of a family heirloom for us, because my grandparents fought Corps of Engineer projects along the Papio Creek in Washington County, my parents fought Corps of Engineer dam projects and then along the Papio Creek in Washington County, and now it's come down to my generation to do the exact same thing. I'm not in opposition to all water retention things, I think there are some of those projects which are worthwhile, but I look at this project and I see it as being unnecessary, for one thing, it displaces.
Thank you, sir.
Nine families and forty properties.
Unnecessary, thank you, you're good, thank you, he was con, anybody pro?
My name's Larry Bradley, L A R R Y B R A D L E Y, sixty, sixty-eight Country Club Oaks Place, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one five two. I'm also on the Papio Missouri N R D Board, I do not speak for the rest of the board, but I will speak to what I know. You know, try to be quick and succinct, and I appreciate my, my representative on this board, Commissioner Maureen Boyle, asking me to come down, perhaps to see this and maybe talk about it. On a personal note, my sisters have land, they're Ogla La Lakota, and they're Hunk Papa Lakota, and they have land up along the Missouri that's underwater, and their land was taken by government entities for building dams. They have land, but it's underwater, if you go back to the Louisiana Purchase, United States bought millions of acres at three cents per acre, and in no way, shape, or form was Congress ever going to reimburse anybody or buy their land any more than three cents an acre, so the Native Americans didn't get it much at all. But today, because of the laws, anybody that, word eminent domain, they get fair market value, so I just want to bring that out. Omaha is the next Kansas City, and I wanted to, you know, make that known, if you, there's a false narrative, false logic, and if back in the fifties and sixties, or even two thousand nineteen, floodwater did not overtake the Omaha metro, then you have to look at, look at the Omaha metro, imagine it in nineteen fifty, then the growth and development nineteen sixty, nineteen eighty, and so on, year two thousand, year two thousand twenty, how far Omaha in the development? Every week, there's development in the next cornfield that goes on, and in northwest Douglas County, if the intersection of Highway Thirty-Six, Highway Thirty-One, they widen those lanes, four-way stoplights, and the traffic engineers probably said, wow, look at all the traffic that's increasing in this area, probably, because there's more development increasing in that area, so the false narrative, the false logic is saying, you know, that, you have to, let me put it this way, I also teach environmental geology at U N O, and if there's those of you on the board that are well-versed in science, and there are those of you that are well-versed in law, for the ones well-versed in science, if you, if we were looking at the ratio of overbank flows. Zoom out. And if T equals time and D equals development, as you increase the impervious cover, the rooftops, the, the cement, the streets, you increase the ratio of overbank flows, that's a given, that's science, that's, you see that anywhere in the universe, but certainly in the other country, any other civilization. So by two thousand twenty, we're going to go say, look, where's the development going to be in twenty thirty, twenty thirty-five, twenty forty? That is why the DS Ten is set, or to, you know, proposed, to prevent overbank, ratio of overbank flows, because the impervious cover, the rooftops, the cement, so the, whatever false narrative or false logic saying that you do not see it now, and I'm not saying I'm a smarty pants, but I have a PhD in geography, it's what you have to perceive in the future, and, and that's how Omaha's growing, it's, it's just growing by leaps and bounds. So for those who are well-versed in science, it's follow the science, something probably the last year for this country's been tough for many to do, but it should be done, but for those of you that are well-versed in law, I'm not a lawyer, but if you present an exhibit, and someone had mentioned it before, and this was Saturday, March twentieth, Omaha World Herald, Housing Construction is Going Crazy in the Metro Area by Cindy Gonzalez, a well-respected journalist, so you trust her particular dialogue and take on this, and it, you know, this is the exhibit to give the lawyers to say, you've got to see the numbers, and this is, you know, this is the key to development, housing, apartment construction is booming. I, my sisters have had their land dispossessed by government entities, Native American land, I feel for these landowners, I understand, but again, you don't fall for that false narrative or false logic, you have to study and follow what the science, the conclusions, and the studies dictate.
Thank you. Anybody against?
Not quite afternoon, Sean Malots, one oh four oh four North one hundred and thirty-second Street, I am opposed to the plan, as many of you know and already recognize, I did have a few questions that I'd like to pass out to the board to ask them, possibly to, you know, follow up with the N R D on these items, thank you, but because of the testimony I've heard, I kind of want to go a different direction, a couple of things I'd like to mention, my brother stated this last week, we were threatened by staff at the Papio N R D for condemnation, we were told that if we do not sell, we will condemn your land. This is land, as I've stated before, and to some extent, it's irrelevant to the discussion I've heard, but this land has been recognized as Pioneer Award, and at least two properties that our family own directly, and I have several cousins in the audience who, their land also have been in the families for over a hundred years. So we're fighting for our legacy and, and trying to understand why Dam Site Ten became a target in this whole process. It has never been one, and today it is, I would like to point out, and I have a copy of it, we spent several years, Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Borgeson and former Commissioner Claire Duda spent years developing Stormwater Management Plan by Douglas County in conjunction with Washington County, and I have a copy of it, I believe it was in the fall of two thousand seven, perhaps the spring of two thousand eight that it was adopted. This plan specifically laid out the use of low-impact development to control flooding. Now, keep in mind that the rhetoric is low-impact development or rain garden, they are not, they are large structures, there's bioswales, there's riparian areas, look at PayPal down along Interstate, that lake on PayPal isn't there for pretty, it's there to catch runoff, it can be done with low-impact development, other cities are doing it, most places in the country are removing dams, not putting them in. I also like to, you know, note the flooding that's being proposed and compared, we're comparing river flooding versus a creek, and again, this is a creek that we used to play in as kids, we walk across it, it rarely even touches the bridge in a heavy storm event in our area, we are not talking about a massive flow of water coming down this creek to create flooding. I think there's been a false sense of security by building these dams throughout the county, I, I do agree, they have helped to some extent in potential flooding, however, I, as part of my parents' generation, they fought this dam no different than Director Japp, my family's been engaged in this for, for generations as well, trying to protect this, and we continually prove that this dam is not cost beneficial, while the reports say one thing, we believe the underlying data should be studied more in depth, and that's why I understand next week there may be a, a resolution to have it studied, you know, this is a lot of money, the entire. The entire project is a hundred and twenty-eight million, as I understand it. But I do believe there are other ways to do this because this NRD will go through condemnation, I can tell you that. A large portion of the land that's being taken is our families, and we are not selling. This land is priceless to us. But we've done what we can on our side to create catchwater basins and catchbasins. We have a catch basin on our farm. We did not need to build this, we did. We did it in conjunction with the University of Nebraska. We've done everything we can to alleviate the flow of water into the Papio Creek. And it's our land that is, the water's flowing down. We've been good stewards with the Papio NRD. They've helped us build sixteen, over sixteen miles of terracing to catch water at its source, which is what, I'm going to loop back to the low-impact development piece of what could be done. General Manager Winkler mentioned, the Corps does not explore low-impact development. Well, does that mean it shouldn't be explored? Let's find ways to make this happen without Dam Site Ten. If there's a flooding issue, there's ways to get there.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody pro?
Good morning, Vic Patios, seventy-sixteen Birch Street. I'm a general counsel for Nebraska Furniture Mart. And I'm here to speak on behalf of Nebraska Furniture Mart as a proponent of Dam Site Ten and the construction. NFM is significantly impacted by the floodplain of the Little Papio Creek. Our corporate headquarters has been since about nineteen seventy-three at seven hundred South Seventy-second Street, just off of Little Papillion Creek. And at that location, we employ about two thousand people. The most, NFM's Omaha campus will be put in a hundred-year floodplain upon the next applicable FEMA map update. And that's going to, that's an indirect impact. Now, we're talking, we're talking about a direct impact here by an actual flood event. And that's something that this would potentially avoid. But there's also indirect impacts. And by putting NFM's campus in a hundred-year floodplain, it does a couple of things. First of all, it limits or sometimes cuts off our ability to actually renovate, renovate our store, our campus, which is obviously something that's critical so we can keep up with the fast-paced world of retail. And with, we will be unable to, at times, pull permits due to limitations on cumulative substantial improvements in the floodplain. And so we would be able to do many of the improvements that our campus needs to stay competitive with other retailers. Additionally, we're going to move from a moderate floodplain, flood hazard area to a special flood hazard area. And what that's going to do is it's going to significantly impact our property insurance premiums. But not only the premiums, but the annual aggregates that would be available to us if a flood event were to happen. So without the flood control improvements that the NRD was talking about today, notably Dam Site Ten and the associated levy and flood wall raises, over time, we'd be likely forced to relocate our corporate headquarters and our campus from our current location here in Omaha. And NFM's in favor of Dam Site Ten. It reduces the flows downstream through Thomas Creek and Little Papio and all the way to Mercy Road. And it addresses a significant number of flood threats here in Omaha. And it provides an opportunity to reduce flood risk to life, safety, and property, and critical infrastructure. And NFM's been waiting a long time for flood relief. And we need it to stay at our current location for the long haul. Now, I wanted to address briefly the Board's resolution on March second, which I've heard several times, folks say that there maybe wasn't authority to do it, or that there wasn't a lot of teeth to it. But optically and politically, it stands in the way and it endangers the potential for this plan to move forward. The resolution puts in jeopardy the fundraising for and implementation of Dam Site Ten. For example, why would the federal government, you know, provide the resources to necessarily fund Dam Site Ten and the associated levian flood wall raises if Douglas County, who stands to benefit greatly from this flood relief, is strongly opposed to it? So our suggestion, and we're really appreciative of the Board members' time in talking with us about this issue and bringing the NRD here to learn more about it, we encourage you to learn as much about this issue as possible and in time to reconsider the March second resolution that you passed opposing it. Thank you.
Hold on, sir. While you've got some time, there's a question, real quick question.
Question, do you, do you think it'll change the rating on the floodplain? I know you touched on that a little bit, for the future, if they, it does move forward?
That's our, that's our understanding, is that if it, and if it doesn't, there's the ability to petition FEMA to, for relief from the flood maps based on some of the changes that are going to take place.
That's what I wondered, because, you know, you heard it here today, that it only affects a small area. And would that impact this area? You know, where they're controlling the water, that four-point-five miles, you know, draining into that small area. That's what I wondered about.
Yeah, I think if you look at the, if you look at the exhibit that was presented, if it's, if I may.
Hold on, let me, let me, let me add five. If there's any Board members that have questions, we got, let me give you five minutes to answer this call. I'm going to say to the questionnaire, you need to be brief as possible, unless that's five minutes up, no more questions.
Okay. And I know you and I spoke, and we'll probably speak again, but we're going to keep working on information on this?
Thank you so much, Commissioner. I wanted to back out so you could actually see, but the, but our campus currently is in this area right here.
Right.
And with the flood relief, with the relief the Dam Site Ten and everything would bring, this is what we expect it to be. And to the extent that it didn't change the FEMA maps, we would seek flood relief based on these changes that were implemented.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Commissioner Fran, real quick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Patios, thanks for the information and appreciate your time. Do you think, is it your, I guess educated guess, would FEMA, if push came to shove, would FEMA provide, or is it their MO to provide corporations mitigation processes prior to the insurance requirements being levied? So in other words, I used the term levy, sorry. But before, before they'd essentially say, here's what you have to do, here are also some mitigation factors that you could apply. I mean, I'm in the insurance business, and the first thing that I would do with a company or a citizen or whoever is I would try to work with underwriters to do the mitigation. So in other words, I'd create, I'd figure out what the regulatory standards are, and then I'd mitigate. Have they told Nebraska Furniture Mart, or do you guess that there would be mitigation factors that could apply no matter what happens with Dam Site Ten?
I can't answer that with any sort of concrete sense. But my sense is that, yes, that there are mitigation factors that can be taken. There are some mitigation factors that we've had because, already, because the floodplain impacts us as is. But there's such a significant increase in the floodplain with the upcoming maps that it's, that the mitigation is going to be very difficult to do. What we're really going to have to do is change the flood maps or, over time, or seek relief directly based on some of the changes that are coming down the pike. And like I said, we're just holding on for those.
Okay, thank you.
Again, any other commissioners with questions? None. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much for your time.
Anybody against?
Good afternoon, my name's Craig Abel, E.B.E.L. I live at one-two-three-two-three Pawnee Road. I'm one of the property owners would be displaced by Dam Site Ten. I own two parcels out of that forty grouping. I'm here, and I sympathize with Nebraska Furniture Mart and their current water concerns and issues. And I'm going to be really brief today, but I just want to state the fact that Dam Site Ten is fifteen-plus miles away from Nebraska Furniture Mart. A wet dam or dry dam only protects if it rains above the dam. Thomas Creek above my place is one-point-five miles away, is all. Nebraska Furniture Mart, I've been there several times, is fifteen-plus miles away. So with Mother Nature having the last at bat here, if it rains below Dam Site Ten in that fifteen-mile radius, I'm pretty sure, and I'm by no means an expert, I'm just a farm kid, I'm pretty sure the figure in seventeen that was displayed would look the same. So it creates a false sense of security for those folks downstream. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody for? One more time, anyone else for? All righty, anyone else against?
Hello, Board, my name Grant Malots. I'm an affected landowner in the area. There's several things that have been said, and I just want to point a few of them out as I've gone here. You know, the first one being that you kind of pointed out too, as Winkler said, these projects that they have done in the Papio have worked, and they have solved the problem of flooding. So why are we not spending the money in the areas that need to be spent? Why should the landowners upstream be liable for the decisions of the landowners downstream? As a farm kid, I always planned on, and instead I bought, a house that was up on a hill. I did not buy a house or build a house that is in the floodplain. I use the same logic anytime, I use common sense. Another thing I have noticed is looking in this report just briefly today again, so Amanda mentions that they looked at alternatives. In the initial array of alternatives, the cost with real estate is twenty-six-point, excuse me, without real estate is twenty-six-point-two billion for Dam Site Ten, with benefits of forty-five million. And the floodwalls that they've suggested in the initial was nine-point-five billion with benefits of sixty-eight million, sorry, I didn't mean billion, nine-point-five million. However, in the final rate for it, Dam Site Ten without the land only costs sixteen million with the same amount of benefits. And the new levies all of a sudden cost thirty-four million, and the benefits are only forty-five million? So what changed in the initial to get to that point? It just, the numbers don't add up, just from my accounting background and from my engineering background. It just doesn't add up, and something smells funny. Thank you guys for your time today.
Thank you. Again, is there anyone for that did not hear me before? Okay, anyone else against? One more time, anyone else against?
Good afternoon. Now, my name is Scott Olson, I'm from Takama, Nebraska. I really don't have anything to do with Dam Site Ten, but we do have a lot to do with the, with the NRD, a lot to do with Corps of Engineers. Presently, the Corps of Engineers are de-channelizing the Missouri River due to mandates from Fish and Wildlife. That is going to change a lot of things that happen over the years coming up in the way Omaha handles the flooding on the bottom end, not the top end. We've tried to work with the NRD before, get to stop a lot of flooding on our farmlands to the north here. I mean, it goes from here clear to Dakota City, so we've got quite an area up there. They've always told us they're here to build dams, not dig ditches. Now, sometimes we need to dig a ditch and make things go away. Anyway, just a quick thought. We don't get a lot of service from the NRD in our areas. We'd like to try to figure out a way to get to cut off from the NRD and start our own up there. But spending our taxpayer's money for what they're trying to do just really doesn't set good with a lot of us people up to the north. And one thing for all you ladies and gentlemen here, if you're going to let them condemn the land that these people own and work on and live on, go out and sit on your porch and have a glass of tea with them.
Thank you. Anyone else against? One more time, anyone else against? All righty, thank you all for your time on this. You'll be aware of next steps. Thank you. We'll move on now to item G and Human Resources. Item one is the personnel report as presented. Item two is, well, let me do this. I don't know how long we'll be here, so I'm going to approve, I'm going to go to items three and four to get them approved, and then we'll come back to legislative items. Item three is a resolution approving the agreement with the Professional Development Academy to provide online leadership training for county employees. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner, Commissioner Dr. Maureen Boyle, that's the appropriate one, that distinction. And is there a second? Second by Commissioner Fran. Seeing no discussion, please vote and roll call, zoom.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. Commissioner Borgeson voting yes virtually. All other commissioners voting in person.
Item four is the revised.
Thank you.
Item four is a revised non-union range pay plan. Is there most to approve? Motion by Commissioner Dr. Maureen Boyle. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Morgan. For the Board, this is the added classification for the Tell Director posting that will happen. Roll call, zoom, please vote.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Yes.
And Commissioner Kavanaugh. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Borgeson voting virtually. All other commissioners present voting in person.
Okay, we'll go back up to item two legislative issues. Item A, discussion actions to oppose legislative bills. The only bill under that category is LB four oh eight, Adopt the Property Tax Request Act. Marcos, quickly explain.
Yeah, Commissioners Marcus Martin, Douglas County Legislation Labor. LB four oh eight is a bill that was put forward through by Senator Breezy. We have serious concerns with LB four oh eight. It is moving along, it has been prioritized. And this bill essentially will cap tax requests from political subdivisions on a limit of a hundred and three percent per year. And there is an amendment pending it that is going to implement a difference, is dramatic to that, but that's the effect of the bill.
Is there a motion to approve opposing LB four oh eight? I'm not, okay.
There is no motion, is that what I heard?
No, I said, I'm asking, is there a motion to approve?
To oppose it, correct?
Yeah, to approve opposing it, sorry.
Yeah, okay, I'll make that motion.
There's a motion by Mr. Borgeson. I will second that. Seeing no hands from the Board, yes, Larry, I'll give you a chance. Okay, come on, Larry.
Oh, okay. Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six-eight-one-three-two. I'd like you to oppose and vote with the people that want to see four oh eight be passed. Because if you don't limit your government starting in this body, you won't limit it at all. The Constitution used to be like this, but because of administrative bodies and state laws and experts, it's now three thousand pages thick. Because of administrative rules and regulations and administrative judges, people that aren't elected. We ask you to represent us by limiting our property tax increases. And if you read this sheet that was passed out in this body a couple of weeks ago, it implies that, oh, we're going to, we're going to limit you to a hundred and three percent on prior year. That means you won't ever cut budgets. You want to sound like it's limiting you three percent increase each year, but it says nothing about cutting taxes. We'd like to see you cut some taxes, so cut some of the programs that we heard about today.
Thank you. Seeing no comment, there is a motion to second. Please vote. Please vote, uh, and roll call Zoom.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Yes.
Motion passes. Commissioner Kavanaugh abstaining, so that means there's five commissioners voting. And there was Commissioner Friend and Morgan voting no, Commissioner Rogers, Maureen Boyle, and Commissioner Borgeson voting yes.
Okay. Uh, we'll go on to item B, discussion and action to watch legislative bills, LB three-fifty-two, changes the amount of certain court fees. Marcos, quickly.
Sure. And for the board, really quick on, on this particular item, we flagged three-fifty-two. It, it does raise court fees in various categories significantly. There is another bill, that, that three-fifty-two has not been prioritized, but LB seventeen has, and that would even, that would add even more court fees to be expanded. And so, um, I think the board has, you know, significant leeway here to decide what it would like to do as far as a motion. We, uh, the, the legislative team, we would at least like to watch or monitor LB three-fifty-two, LB seventeen, and any other legislation that would significantly increase court fees. As you all know, the county attorney pays those court fees every time that they file. When we, in conjunction with them, when we did a review of the impact of fifty, of three-fifty-two and LB seventeen, it'd be our estimates, just out of the bat, probably a hundred thousand dollars in court fees alone for twenty-twenty-two in, in the case that these, these court fees were to, you know, all be thrown into a single bill and, you know, and passed. So like I said, kind of the strategy on this is LB three-fifty-two has not been prioritized. LB seventeen, we believe, could blend in three-fifty-two, and, and that would probably move it forward. So my ask, I guess, of the board today, and Sean Kelly's ask, is for us to monitor or watch three-fifty-two, seventeen, and any legislation that would increase court fees.
Okay. Seeing no questions from board.
I, I just have a comment if I could.
Go ahead.
I, I'm gonna, we, we need to watch this real closely because I just found out that, um, they voted down our nine-one-one, uh, user fee bill, and their argument was, is so that, um, they were against raising fees on the users. And I'll get more when I'm not on the board meeting, get more detail of it and bring it back to the board. But I find it ironic that there would be senators that were opposed to that because again, it wasn't a shall, it's a may, that we may, as local governments, decide to increase those fees to cover our nine-one-one cost. The argument was, by many, and those being our Douglas County senators, that they were against raising those fees because of a couple of things. One, because of the influx in federal dollars. Two, because of, um, the city not using restaurant tax to cover the cost and a mere, a bunch of others. But anyway, I'll get the details. But for bills like this, that again, back to even some of the com, the comment that was made by a citizen, these are the things we have to be concerned about because while we have no control what they shift on us, what they take away as revenue from us, or what they mandate us unfunded, the only place that we can create revenue to pay for these sources are property taxes. That's not by our choosing, that's by the state's choosing. And so again, I say we just watch very closely because again, these will have a negative financial impact on the county taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve watching LB three-fifty-two? Motion by Commissioner Dr. Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Morgan.
Mr. Chair, if I may, Mr. Sammartine, was the intention to also include LB seventeen on the watch?
Yeah, so I, I guess what I would ask, what I would ask the board is, because like I said, we have significant latitude with this, you know, with all the bills that are pending.
For the record, state what seventeen is, Marcos, because.
Okay, yeah, so, so. So the one that's listed on there is LB three-fifty-two. LB seventeen is a bill by Senator Coulterman, is, the title of it is Change Actuarial, Actuarial Valuation and Amortization Provisions for Certain State Retirement Systems. Within that bill, it includes, um, some, some increases to the, um, judge's retirement, the fee that's used to, to generate the judge of retirement bond.
Okay. The motion or a second, fine with including LB seventeen, looking? Yes, yes.
And any legislation that would affect, I mean, ultimately, that would be our ask. Any legislation that would affect court fees or increasing court fees.
Can I legally include any other action to cover? Okay. Okay, looking at the motion and second there.
Uh, give us one moment, please.
There, okay, they're fine.
Uh, Marcos, could you, could you say that again so we get it right?
Sure, LB three-fifty-two, we're gonna, we're gonna watch or monitor LB three-fifty-two, LB seventeen, and any legislation that would, uh, increase court fees.
Okay.
Or the like.
Okay, we are ready for the vote when you all are.
Looking, roll call Zoom, vote in the chamber.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Yes.
Motion passes. Commissioner Kavanaugh abstaining, Commissioner Borgeson voting yes virtually, all other commissioners voting yes in person.
Um, I know of no other legislative matters. With that, my understanding is there are no issues for executive session. With that, is there a motion to adjourn? There's a motion by Dr. Maureen, by Commissioner Dr. Boyle. Second by Morgan, please now, before we vote.
Uh, Mr. Chair, could I just say one thing before we adjourn?
Yes, ma'am, saying, you know, PJ will come to you.
Just, just quickly, I wanted everyone to keep Commissioner Mike Boyle in our thoughts and prayers as he's going through, um, a medical surgery today. He gave me permission to say this, and so again, just keep him in our thoughts and prayers as, um, he, uh, is actually in surgery right now, but, um, just keep him in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan.
Uh, thank you for saying that. I had asked for permission from Maureen, Commissioner Boyle, doctor. She said it was okay to say something about that, so I appreciate what you just said, and that's what I was gonna ask to do too. So, uh, we will be saying some prayers, and, uh, it's kind of interesting right now, if you go back forty years ago, uh, Mike was running for mayor his first term and had his, uh, activity at the field club that election night evening. So it's almost exactly forty years ago.
Commissioner, Commissioner Friend.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, it's kind of strange, I look over to the right here, and I'm, I'm waiting for Mike Boyle to wink at me, and I'm, I'm, I'm thinking of him too, and our prayers are with him. I did want to, a point of personal privilege, I did want to say that a former colleague of mine, Senator Dwight Peterson, passed away last week. And Dwight, Dwight was a really funny guy. He actually convinced me during an appropriations measure to side with him and close a prison. And it never succeeded, but he, that Mickey Mouse tie just made me think, well, this guy can't be wrong. He's got to be right. And, um, he was a very, a very good person, and I'm glad I, I'm glad I knew him. And our thoughts and prayers are with his, him and his family. Thank you.
My Commissioner Friend, his family will be with us, um, next week. There's a resolution being prepared, and they will be present with us next week to honor him, just so, so you are aware of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for Mr. Friend. Seeing nothing else, uh, please vote, roll call Zoom.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Borgeson voting virtually, all other commissioners present voting in person. Adjourned at eighteen PM.